Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council Hearing of the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Technology, jointly with Economic Development. At this time, can everyone please silence your cellphones? If you wish to testify today, please go up to the sergeant's desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. I am New York City Councilmember Chi Ose, Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries and International Intergroup Relations. I know it's a mouthful. I do it every single time, but I'm still getting used to it. My pronouns are he/him/his. Welcome to our joint committee hearing with the Committee on Economic Development, chaired by Councilmember Amanda Farias, and the Committee on Technology chaired by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez. Today's oversight hearing is on film industry expansion here in New York City. At this hearing, the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries and International Intergroup Relations will also be hearing one piece of legislation which is unrelated to this oversight topic, but is very important: A pre-considered resolution co-sponsored by Councilmembers Natasha Williams, Amanda Farias, Shekhar Krishnan and Shahana Hanif, recognizing the month of Ramadan annually in the city of New York and celebrating the significant role of Muslims in the multicultural fabric of New York City communities. I welcome my colleague Councilmember Williams, who has joined us today to provide brief remarks on this legislation. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Chair. This will be very brief. I'm just really excited to introduce this resolution recognizing the month of Ramadan. I have many Muslims that live within my council district, and I know this city as a whole is full of the vitality of the Muslim community. And also, as the daughter of a Muslim, I am excited to introduce this. And I'm sure that maybe Councilmember Hanif or Farias, who are my awesome co-sponsors here, might also want to share some words. And it was written with such excellence and want to thank the writer of the bill, Regina.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Now, let's start our oversight hearing on film industry expansion in New York City by providing a little background. It is noteworthy that three committees have come together for this hearing and that each committee has its own perspective on our multifaceted hearing topic. In a moment, I will turn the microphone over to Chair Farias to speak from the economic development perspective and the financial impact of the growing film industry on our New York City economy. I will then ask Chair Gutierrez to introduce the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, or MoM, and to speak about the impact of the film industry on New York City's small businesses and local communities. My committee has a somewhat different perspective from theirs, though we are, of course, keenly interested in the economic impact of an expanding multimillion-dollar film and television industry and how that industry contributes to the cultural landscape of our city. But let me provide a little background on my committee's unique perspective. The Department of Cultural Affairs, or DCLA, is both the country's largest municipal funder of art and culture in the city agency responsible for supporting arts and cultural organizations in our five boroughs. At least since the development of DCLA's CREATE NYC, the 10-year comprehensive cultural plan for New York City, which was published in 2017, the importance of expanding and supporting diversity in the art and cultural sector has been officially recognized in our city and specifically the DCLA. One of the original strategies of CREATE NYC was to begin new efforts to support the professional development and career advancement of cultural workers from underrepresented groups. When translated into DCLA's Action Plan in 2019, that strategy became two key strategies: to increase funding for individual artists, especially those from underrepresented communities, and to improve cultural access for historically marginalized groups of artists, audience and cultural workers. Those underrepresented and historically marginalized groups of artists to which DCLA's Action Plan was referring include people of color, LGBTQIA+ individuals, people with disabilities and women. For example, one specific action in DCLA's Action Plan for fiscal years 2018 through 2020 was launching and paying out the majority of MoM's $5 million Women's Film, TV and Theater Fund to support film and theater projects led by artists identifying as women or coming from a female perspective. We know that filmmaking and the film industry as a whole is governed by MoM, but DCLA has a unique position in this work. DCLA has a commitment through CREATE NYC and through the leadership of Commissioner Lori Combo to bring more diversity to the arts and cultural world in the city. And the agency has been committed to supporting artists and organizations by providing guidance and admin support, creating funding streams such as the Cultural Development Fund, otherwise known as CDF, and capital dollars for physical spaces and being vocal champions and advocates for our cultural community. With a budding and growing film industry in our city, DCLA has a powerful role to play increasing representation in film. And in this hearing, I hope to understand the ways this agency can foster filmmakers and film organizations. My committee specifically wants to understand how DCLA is encouraging and supporting artists from underrepresented groups who work in the film and television industry in our city: artists like Black filmmakers who create and produce small independent films that speak to their own histories from their unique perspectives. We are also interested in understanding how DCLA works to support and foster film and television careers for our youth, whether that is through initiatives or supporting after-school activities and CUNY film programs. My colleagues in the Economic Development and Technology Committees will emphasize the need to center local workers and businesses. If we want to center the local workforce in this industry, we also need to cultivate and foster a local workforce that means investing in our youth. We're not interested solely in large film studios with new and expanding facilities, though we recognize what they contribute to our city too. We want to explore how DCLA can support small grassroots film organizations and BIPOC organizations as the film industry expands in New York, including capital funding for studio space. We want to understand how the city council can best support the efforts that are spotlighted in DCLA's CREATE NYC and subsequent Action Plan, efforts that increase funding for individual artists, especially those from underrepresented communities. Before I move on to Chair Farias for her opening statement, I want to acknowledge my colleagues on the committee who are present: Councilmembers Ung, Joseph, Williams, Lewis, Hanif, Dinowitz, Moya, Juan, Kagan and Botcher. I would also like to thank my staff and the committee staff for their work in preparing today's hearing: my Chief of Staff Naomi Hopkins, my Policy and Budget Director May Vutrapong Vitana, the Committee's Senior Legislative Counsel Brenda McKinney, the Committee's Legislative Policy Analyst Regina Paul, who also wrote the resolution we are hearing, and Sandra Gray, the Committee's Financial Analyst. Now, I would like to invite Chair Farias to give her opening statement. Chair?
Thank you so much, Chair Ose, and thank you to Chair Gutierrez and the members of all three committees for coming together for today's joint hearing. My name is Amanda Farias, and I have the privilege of chairing the Council's Committee on Economic Development. This committee primarily oversees the city's Economic Development Corporation, who, along with the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, work to ensure that city, state and federal incentives are made available to the many film and production teams that either operate out of New York or use the city as the setting for various film media. Since the early 2000s, there has been a push to build infrastructure to attract film and media to New York. The state's film production tax credit offers a 25% tax credit on qualified costs incurred in New York State for eligible productions, including craft and technical services, crew production, expenses for facilities, props, makeup and wardrobe, cost of set construction and pay for background talent. In 2010, the state also introduced a post-production tax credit, which offers an additional 25% tax credit for qualified post-production costs in New York, including picture, sound and music editing, re-recording and mixing, visual effects, graphic design, original scoring, animation and music composition. These incentives had led to a boom in the development or renovation of film studios in New York. In 2016, the construction of Silver Cup Studios Port Morris Campus resulted in the creation of a 115,000 square foot of studio space and 500 jobs across the construction and film production industries. In 2020, York Studios Michelangelo Campus was completed just outside of my district, and I'll be getting it in redistricting, and features 350,000 square feet of studio space and also resulted in the creation of around 500 jobs. And there are several more large studios currently under construction, including Netflix's new Brooklyn facility as well as expansions to existing facilities owned by Steiner Studios, Kaufman Astoria Studios and Broadway Stages. Apple too has been leasing additional production space for its programming. Last year alone, there was nearly 1 million square feet of new or renovated media space in the city. While I applaud our partners at EDC, MoM and the media and entertainment sector in driving more production here, I have to ask the question, what is the local benefit? Part of this committee's role is to evaluate the workforce development and small business engagement strategies of city agency incentive programs. To that end, I would like to focus today on how the film and entertainment sector is working to ensure that New Yorkers are being hired at these facilities, that local businesses are being supported by film and media crews and that film crews undertake best efforts to minimize disruptions to the lives of everyday New Yorkers who live and work in film areas. City residents and small businesses are regularly asked to deal with the unpleasant reality of living and working on active film sets. From film trailers blocking busy streets to loud generators running right outside people's homes and glaring floodlights during the nighttime hours, there's often little relief for New Yorkers who live and work in areas where filming occurs regularly. Many city businesses lament that they lose considerable revenue whenever film crews operate on their streets since roads are usually closed and foot traffic plummets. Many small businesses complain that they are not given proper notice ahead of film street closures and therefore cannot make appropriate arrangements to reduce staff on those days. Similarly, film crews often bring their own catered food and make arrangements for other services, which means less opportunities to do business at local restaurants, clothing shops or hair and nail salons. To be clear, this hearing is not a criticism of the fine work being done by the many film crews who continue to showcase New York City and all its glory in their productions. Rather, this is an opportunity to voice concerns regarding how the state's tax incentive programs have achieved their goal of driving more film and production work to the city but without a firm understanding of the local impact. Today, we look forward to hearing from MoM regarding what is being done to expand local hires in the film and entertainment sector, how the industry is working to minimize disruption to the lives of everyday New Yorkers and what, if anything, is being done to incentivize film crews to patronize local city businesses. Before I turn it over to my co-chair, I'd like to just take a moment to thank the staff of the Economic Development Committee, Senior Counsel Alex Polenoff, Senior Policy Analyst William Hongach and Financial Analyst Glenn Martinelli for all their hard work in putting this hearing together. With that said, I will now turn it back over to my co-chair, Councilmember Jen Gutierrez, for her opening remarks. And I'd like to announce that we've been joined by Councilmembers Holden and Abreu for this hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. Buenas tardes. I'm Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Technology. I'm happy to join my colleagues Chair Ose and Chair Farias in holding this joint hearing on film industry expansion in New York City. The film industry is an inextricable part of New York's cultural and economic fabric and presents a tremendous opportunity for growth that can benefit all New Yorkers. But like all other issues we discuss in the tech committee, we need to make sure we are approaching this from an equity angle. Tens of millions of people visit New York City each year, and this held true even during the pandemic, when the city saw around 22 million visitors in 2020. This is a no small part due to New York City's significant presence in TV shows and movies. But the film industry does more than just boost our city's tourism profile. As mentioned by my colleagues, the film industry in New York City employs thousands of New Yorkers and brings in billions of dollars of tax revenue and economic impact to the city. As such, expanding the film industry here presents a tremendous opportunity for growth. New York City already has a number of great programs in place to encourage a local and diverse workforce for the film industry. The Made in NYC series of programs includes education that enables New Yorkers to start careers in the film industry, like the post-production training, production assistant training and writers' room programs. MoM, the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, also runs the New York City Women's Fund for Media, Music and Theater and the Women's Screen Writing Contest, along with a number of other programs that foster local talent. But we can always do more, and we should strive to do more, especially as the film industry expands in New York City. Beyond focusing on hiring locally and facilitating a diverse workforce, supporting union labor and ensuring a living wage with benefits, we should also look to involve more of our small businesses in taking part in and thereby benefiting from the film industry's expansion. This applies not just to small businesses that directly work in the industry, such as production studios, costume and prop manufacturers and more, but also our restaurants, equipment rental businesses, cafes, laundromats and other businesses. In particular, we must engage our MWBEs as we look to expand our film industry and ensure that we empower all New Yorkers so that these efforts do not leave anyone behind. Further, we must take into consideration the impacts that the film industry's expansion can have on our residents and make the effort to both minimize adverse effects on quality of life and allow for reliable communication through avenues like NYC 311 so that all New Yorkers are willing to support the expansion of the film industry. I look forward to discussing how the city plans to manage, bless you, manage this expansion, specifically thinking critically about where larger film operations are housed. As a member with a large industrial business zone in my district, I need to ensure we are protecting the core manufacturing businesses which are vital to the supply chain of the city. Today, we hope to learn more about what's in store for New Yorkers and what we can all expect to see as the film industry continues to grow. I'm looking forward to hearing testimony from the administration and members of the public that are here today. I would also like to acknowledge Councilmembers Kevin Riley and Councilmembers Ressler and Councilmember Crystal Hudson. Does that everyone? Thank you. Great. Who have joined us. And now I want to turn it back to the Committee Counsel for administrative proceedings.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez. Now, I would like to address some housekeeping items before we begin with the administration's testimony. First, as a reminder, today is an in-person hearing with the option of virtual testimony for the public. The committees will be accepting registrations for testimony throughout the hearing. Anyone who is attending in person and who wishes to testify in person should see the sergeant-at-arms to fill out a witness slip, even if you registered in advance online. As usual, we will begin today's hearing with testimony from the administration, followed by Councilmember questions and answers, and then move to public testimony. We will limit Councilmember Q and A, including comments, to five minutes. During the public testimony portion of the hearing, witnesses from the public will be limited to two minutes. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. The committees will also be accepting written testimony for up to 72 hours after the hearing. Now, I will turn to our senior committee counsel, who will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from the administration, who may then begin their testimony. Brenda?
And also recognizing that Councilmember Ressler is here. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before these committees today and to answer Councilmember questions honestly? Thank you. And with that, we may begin with administration testimony.
Hi. Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Chairs Ose, Farias and Gutierrez and members of the City Council Committees on Cultural Affairs, Economic Development and Technology. I'm Anne Del Castillo, Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, and I am joined by Kwame Amoku, MoM's Deputy Commissioner for the Film Office, Lori Barrett Peterson, MoM's General Counsel and members of my senior leadership team. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to discuss the state of film and television production in New York City. Since 1947, the beginning of the TV era, the city's Film Office has been charged with permitting production throughout New York City and supporting the economic growth of film and television in New York City. In 2010, our Film Office operations were merged with NYC Media, the city's production group and television and radio network, and our agency became known as the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, otherwise known as MoM. In the last six years, MoM's portfolio has been expanded from two divisions to five. In addition to the Film Office and NYC Media, MoM now oversees the Office of Nightlife, the Press Credentials Office and the Creative Sector Programs Office, which focuses on economic and workforce development in theater, music, live performance, advertising, publishing, digital media and video games. Prior to the pandemic, these sectors accounted for nearly half a million jobs and $150 billion in economic activity. But more than that, I think we'd all agree, New York City's creative sectors are at the heart of our identity as a world-class center for creativity and culture. The film and television industry is the largest economic driver of all of New York City's creative sectors, the result of over 80 years of strategic thinking, collaboration and engagement among government, industry and other stakeholders. The global film and television industry actually began in New York City when Broadway actors were drawn to the celluloid spotlight of motion picture making. But better weather and more open space eventually drew much of the industry to Los Angeles until New York City government began an aggressive campaign to lure the motion picture industry back to New York. New York City was the first municipality in the country to establish a Film Commission and a Cultural Affairs Commission. The Film Office was created to support the film and recent television industry and simplify the process of filming in New York City. In 1962, the city council passed a local law to establish a filming permit. And in 1966, Mayor Lindsay created the NYPD Movie and TV Unit. Today, the Film Office and the NYPD Movie and TV Unit continue to help film and television creators from all over the world land their productions in New York City. When governments from other municipalities, states and countries want to see how this is done, they look to us here in New York City. New York City has been depicted on screen as a place of wonder and vitality, helping to reinforce the city's culture and positioning on the global stage. The city's iconic urban landscape has been featured in countless productions, making its skyline, its streets and buildings cultural touchstones for people the world over, inspiring millions to visit, live and do business here. In 2019, the film and television industry supported over 185,000 total jobs in New York City, accounting for over $18 billion in total wages and nearly $82 billion in total economic output. To put it in context, the film and television industry represents 6.5% of the New York City economy, based on its share of the city's gross domestic product. While the COVID-19 pandemic initially forced the industry to a standstill, film and television production was one of the first industries back to in-person work. The triumphant return of the industry is a recovery success story and is a testament to the industry's resiliency and continuous innovation in the face of adversity. At the end of last year, television production had returned to nearly pre-pandemic levels with nearly 80 shows filming in New York City. When we talk about the film and television industry, often the first thought that comes to mind is the big Hollywood studios. But the industry actually consists of an expansive range of players, from multinational corporations and world-renowned production studios to independent filmmakers and sole proprietor businesses that support the industry. Large and small, these entities support the livelihoods of hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers. They are our family, our neighbors, our friends, and they are all New Yorkers who are earning a living in their city. Film and television production creates jobs and opportunities for New Yorkers who have never even set foot on a set: drive cleaners like Kingbridge Taylor &amp; Cleaners in Brooklyn, lumber providers like Lenovo Lumber in Queens, florists like Jamali Garden in Midtown and legal and financial firms throughout the city that represent clients in the industry. We hear many stories from local business owners who tell us how business-generated productions has helped them grow and survive through COVID. For example, when "In the Heights" filmed in Upper Manhattan in the summer of 2019, they spent $640,000 on lodging, $673,000 on catering and other food items and $537,000 on hardware and lumber supplies. There are also countless churches, schools, parks, catering halls and nonprofit organizations throughout the city that have hosted productions and benefited from locations fees and community givebacks. The Parks Department reported that it received more than $570,000 in donations from productions last year. Productions participating in the Made in New York Marketing Credit Program, which only captures a fraction of the projects made in New York, has generated over $500,000 in donations to 51 cultural institutions and community organizations in New York City over the last five years. The program, which is designed to promote Made in New York productions, provides qualified film and television productions with advertising on buses and subways and other city-owned assets. Participants in this program are required to contribute a portion of their budget, up to $10,000, to a community or a cultural institution. The volume of film and television production has grown exponentially in recent years, largely due to the demand for streaming content. When I first joined the agency as General Counsel in 2014, we had just under 30 episodic television series filming in New York City. We now have close to 80. But increasing competition from other jurisdictions with generous incentives is threatening to undercut the tremendous progress we've made in building a thriving industry. In addition to supporting the governor's proposed enhancements to the state film tax credit, this administration has recommitted to the industry to ensure that this great New York success story continues. Last year, Mayor Adams issued Executive Order 21 requiring each city agency to designate at least one staff liaison and an alternate with the authority to expedite and coordinate arrangements with the Film Office to facilitate on-location production throughout the five boroughs. In addition, we convene the first-ever Film and Television Production Industry Council, comprised of a diverse group of stakeholders from film studios, sound stages, unions, trade associations and workforce training partners to advise the city's production policies and programs. And finally, we appointed Kwame Amoku as Deputy Commissioner for the Film Office to promote New York City as a premier location for production, support the development of infrastructure for production and post-production and expand our workforce development efforts. Two weeks ago, we joined Mayor Adams and Queensborough President Richards at a topping-out ceremony for Wildflower Studios, a new soundstage developed in Astoria that will be the first-ever vertical soundstage with 11 stages that will house 1,000 jobs. Currently, nearly 1 million square feet of production and other related spaces being newly built or renovated throughout the five boroughs. Other projects include the Made in New York campus at Bush Terminal in Brooklyn, Pier 94 at Hudson River Park, York Studios in Soundview and Broadway Stages in Staten Island. In addition to expanding infrastructure, we continue to work with industry partners to build a strong local talent pipeline for jobs in the industry. The Made in New York Production Assistant Training Program provides free training for underemployed and unemployed New Yorkers seeking work in production. Over the last 15-plus years, more than 1,000 people have graduated from the program and secured jobs in the industry. The PA program has served as a model for the Made in New York Post-Production Training Program, which has nearly 200 New Yorkers working the fields of editing, animation, motion graphics and visual effects. We've also expanded our programs to include early career exposure with opportunities for deeper engagement for those who want to pursue careers in the industry. The Made in New York Animation Project is a partnership with the Department of Probation, Neon Centers and the Animation Project, which offers participants the opportunity to engage in storytelling, gain technical skills in 3D computer animation and qualify for paid internships in this burgeoning field. Media Makers is a partnership with Real Works, the City University of New York, Media Companies and the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees to train, credential and prepare emerging talent for careers in media and entertainment. These programs were developed in consultation with employers to ensure that participants gain relevant skills so that we can build a strong pipeline of New York City talent to continue to build our local industry. We also provide educational opportunities through programs such as the Made in New York Talk Series and the Public School Film Festival. Presented in partnership with the Center for Communication, the Made in New York Talk Series presents a variety of free programs exploring multiple topics within the media and entertainment industry where students can learn from and network with industry professionals. The Public School Film Festival, presented in partnership with the Department of Education, celebrates the talent and diversity of student voices and provides opportunities for middle and high school students to have their work recognized by industry leaders and explore careers in filmmaking. Overall, MoM has created educational and training programs that reach 6,000 New Yorkers a year. The success of New York City's film industry is possible because of the drive, talent and hard work of our local production and small business community and the collaborative, responsive and flexible approach that city government has taken with respect to production. We should all be proud of what we have achieved together. Decades ago, we were the first city in the nation to set up a government entity to make film and television production work for everyone. And look where we are now. We have 185,000 jobs generated from the film and television industry, nearly $82 billion in economic output, which represents 6.5% of New York City's economy. The artists who work in film and television production create images of our city that are unforgettable. Each time someone somewhere sees an image of New York City on a television, at a movie theater or on their streaming device, our position as a world capital grows. As we build a future for this industry, we look forward to working with city agencies, industry stakeholders, local communities and of course, you, the city council, to ensure continued sustainable economic growth and job opportunities for all New Yorkers. Thank you again for the opportunity to discuss this important economic and creative engine. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Commissioner. I would like to start today with a few questions related to cultural affairs. My staff was informed that because DCLA is not available to testify today, that MoM is prepared to answer questions on DCLA's behalf. So the first question I wanted to ask about is, you know, DCLA is required through CREATE NYC, the city's comprehensive 10-year cultural plan for the city's art and cultural sector, launched in 2017 to, quote, "begin new efforts to support the professional development and career advancement of cultural workers from underrepresented groups." How does DCLA, through the perspective of MoM, engage with the filmmaking and film production industry to support workers from underrepresented groups?
So, as part of the CREATE NYC plan, there were a couple of pieces that we have been working on with DCLA. So, I know that one of the objectives was to increase So, one of the, I know that one of the objectives was to increase funding for, and support for underserved communities, and that was part of the impetus behind our New York City Women's Fund for Media, Music, and Theater. To date, we have awarded $5.5 million in grants to 246 New York-based artists, and we're about to announce the fourth cycle of grants in the coming month, where we'll be granting another $2 million. And those are really important projects, because the idea is to support these creatives who are just at the precipice of getting to their next stage. You know, they're a little bit above emerging, and so these projects are ones that can take them to really, like, the next level of their professional development. And we've seen great success with some of these programs. One of the very first grantees was a transgender woman by the name of Isabel Sandoval, who was able to finish, because of our grant, was able to finish her film, get it into the Venice Biennale, and has gone on to win countless awards with that film and is now working on other film projects. And just recently, one of our projects was nominated for a Grammy Award. It was a woman who was nominated in the, it's a, it's a, it's kind of a unique category. I forget what the name of it is, but, so, we are seeing opportunities for our grantees to move to the next level of their careers.
And I also want to know, from your perspective, in relation to working closely with DCLA, does DCLA believe that BIPOC, people with disabilities, women, and members of the LGBTQIA+ plus community are underrepresented in the film and TV industry? And if so, what can DCLA do to help increase representation?
I have to say, the work that we've done with DCLA was really solidified, particularly during the pandemic. You know, DCLA is primarily a grant-making institution for nonprofit organizations. And we, at Moam, are really focused on sort of the industry development side, but through the pandemic, we really saw that the line between those worlds is pretty small. The creative community across the sectors was really adversely affected, and so we worked very closely with DCLA to connect them to resource, to connect our constituents, artists from across the spectrum, to resources and government, connect them to, we advocated to get them small-business grants. Some of the nonprofit arts organizations weren't previously eligible for that. We wanted to make sure that our constituents in those spaces knew that they had access to some of the HRA resources, unemployment benefits. And so I think we share a very common goal of uplifting the tremendous diversity across New York City. That is truly the draw of New York, is the vast diversity. You know, it's from the small community theater in Queens to Broadway. It's small media arts groups making productions to the big productions that are filming on soundstages. We share a commitment to advancing these sectors, but making sure that New Yorkers have opportunities at every level and in every space within those sectors.
Thank you for that response. And with regard to connecting folks and people within this community to government and trying to diversify them in government, the examples you provided about supporting women, can you tell me more about the ways in which the city supports LGBTQIA+ individuals, or has been doing so?
So, we also, in addition to the Women's Fund, I know that there are a number, there's a number of arts organizations that serve those populations that are funded by DCLA. On our side at Moam, we also provide marketing support to promote and raise the visibility of some of these festivals and organizations. Pardon me while I refer to some of my notes, if you don't mind.
No worries.
Because there's a lot of them. Okay, so, you know, some of these organizations, whether they're supported by Moam or DCLA, they include like the African Diaspora Film Festival, the Asian American Film Lab, Firelight Media, Ghetto Film School, Latin American Film Center, Black Public Media. There's a whole host and range of organizations, and I think, you know, it's important that we continue to support these, because it is, it is, again, what makes New York City arts so innovative, so diverse, and really sets the standard for the global stage.
Thank you. From your point of view, does DCLA view the film and television industry as a priority in its work and outreach? Why or why not?
I mean, film and television sits squarely within Moam's portfolio, but there are certainly media arts organizations and film organizations that are supported by DCLA funds, for sure. And we, again, we work very closely, we work with each other's constituent groups to make sure that they're aware of either funding opportunities or promotional opportunities that we offer. So it's a pretty fluid dialogue that takes place between the agencies.
And how does DCLA engage with, thank you for that response, how does DCLA engage with major filmmakers and multimillion-dollar firm studios? Do you have any examples?
Again, DCLA is primarily focused on the nonprofit side of, and grant-making side. The relationship with industry falls within Moam's purview.
And I hear you on that response, but I'm sure that many of the nonprofit sides that DCLA works with, you know, represent or engage with small, independent filmmakers. So, we'd love to hear from your perspective how DCLA engages with those small filmmakers and small filmmaking studios slash organizations.
As a funder of nonprofit organizations, I'm not sure to what degree DCLA engages with individual filmmakers, but happy to confer with them and get back to you on that.
Thank you. And I know you touched on this a bit before, but New York City is home to a number of filmmaking events, most notably the Tribeca Film Festival. Film festivals and other similar events can be critical to gaining exposure for a filmmaker. And your perspective, from your Moam perspective, how does DCLA provide guidance to filmmakers who want to enter these large-scale film festivals but do not know where to begin?
Again, I'm not sure what their engagement is with individual filmmakers, as much of their grant-making is focused on institutions, but a number of the institutions, and I, in full transparency, I was actually a former grantee at American Documentary, we received DCLA funds, and we were very active in guiding our filmmakers about how to apply a number of these organizations that support independent media artists. That's their sole function, is to help guide them to funding, how to apply to festivals, all of that.
And do you know how many Cultural Development Fund or CDF awards were granted by DCLA this past year went to small filmmakers/filmmaking organizations by chance?
I would actually have to get back to you on that.
Thank you. And also, as you know, studio space is vital for filmmakers and organizations to be able to film, produce, edit, and work on their films and other media projects. DCLA does provide capital dollars to organizations for physical space, and no worries if you don't know the response to this question right now, but do you know how many filmmakers/filmmaking organizations received capital funding for studio space and other physical space slash technology upgrades for filmmaking?
I would have to get back to you on that.
Another question is, what is DCLA's responsibility with regard to supporting workers in the production side of the film industry, and how does DCLA reach out specifically to workers of color in film production?
Again, I know that DCLA supports a number of organizations that strive for advancement of BIPOC artists in the industry. We work with a number of their grantees, actually, like the Media Makers Program that I mentioned is run by Real Works, which I believe receives funds from DCLA as well. And there's many, many others, and I'd be happy to provide a list.
Real Works is amazing. As mentioned, one of the Create NYC goals is to, quote, "begin new efforts to support the professional development and career advancement of cultural workers from underrepresented groups," end quote. As a deadline to check in with Create NYC benchmarks approaches, what does DCLA plan to do in the next few years to support local filmmakers and small film organizations?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
If we want the film and TV industry to hire locally, then we need to educate a local workforce, starting with our youth. Do you know how DCLA supports New York City youth who are interested in film and TV careers?
And I think there's quite a bit of overlap in the work that we, that DCLA and Moam does, but we really try, at least on the Moam side, we try to engage DOE students, CUNY students, you know, through projects like the Public School Film Festival. But again, there's a number of media arts organizations throughout the city that receive funds from DCLA to do work locally, as well as across the city.
And as we all know, New York City has schools with very prestigious film programs, such as NYU Tisch and those at the New School, but we also have a number of amazing CUNY institutions that offer programs in the arts and culture. How is DCLA supporting CUNY in their film programs and supporting college students who are interested in entering this industry?
So, I can't speak to DCLA, but what I can say is, on the Moam side, we've worked, for example, with Lehman College. They produced a series of shorts, particularly during the pandemic, to document some of the work that was happening in the creative spaces that we were able to air on NYC Media, and they've continued to document other creative spaces since then, and it's created a really wonderful opportunity for the students to get real hands-on experience and training in film production.
Thank you.
Oh, and we also, sorry, work with, I'd be really remiss if I did not mention that we were a partner with the Fierstein Graduate School of Cinema, which is the first CUNY on a working production lot over at the Brooklyn Navy Yard. So we really are committed to advancing opportunities for CUNY students.
And that's through Moam, correct?
Yes.
Prior to this hearing, our office heard from some of the SIGs or the Cultural Institution Group, who expressed interest in expanding opportunities in the film industry to underrepresented artists. How does DCLA plan to partner with members of the SIG to bring in more diversity to the film industry?
We can certainly follow with DCLA, but again, we've, these are part of our sort of ongoing conversations with them to engage some of their grantees. You know, it's, at the end of the day, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty, it's not a great designation between nonprofit and industry. It's like, it's a, it's a very fluid ecosystem in the film and media arts world. And so, that's partly why we are working so closely together.
And this is the last DCLA question, then, it's totally Moam. I think, I appreciate you for answering all of these. But as we head into budget negotiations, how much funding will DCLA need to continue, expand, or start programming that will help support small filmmakers and film organizations?
I will definitely not respond to that answer, I want to have with my colleagues, and we'll have them get back to you on that.
All right, thank you so much. Well, I hope these will be more engaging, because I think they pertain to Moam a lot more than DCLA, but DCLA is required through Create NYC to, quote, "partner with city agencies and the cultural sector to better communicate cultural offerings across socioeconomic accessibility and language barriers." Moam is one of the agencies specifically identified. How does DCLA engage with Moam generally?
So, one of, there's one example that I would like to point to, that I think was pretty critical, especially during the pandemic. When everything was shut down, DCLA grantees, our live performance across the city was not able to access audiences, and so we actually worked with DCLA and NYC and Company to create virtual experiences of art and culture. And the name escapes me, so again, I'm going to refer to my notes, but, and that was a very robust program that was able to keep the arts alive and have our arts organizations stay connected to their audiences. It was called the Virtual NYC Curator Collections, and so we would often work with executive directors at some of the DCLA-funded organizations to curate experiences throughout the city, and we promoted those in partnership with DCLA, NYC and Company, and Moam.
And DCLA's action plan, which grew out of Create NYC, recorded activities in fiscal year 2018 through 2020 that included launching and paying out the majority of Moam's $5 million Women's Film, TV, and Theater Fund to support film and theater projects led by artists identifying as women, as we brought up before, or coming from a female perspective. Would you talk a bit more about this work? Although this is a Moam program, would you talk about this a little, would you talk a little bit more about this work?
Yeah, this is one of the programs that we're particularly proud of. I mean, to be able to provide opportunities for 246 projects by New Yorkers is no small feat. Our partner on that project is the New York Foundation for the Arts. They administer the grant program, they do all of the outreach. Initially, the fund was started with just film, TV, and theater in mind, and then we realized we were missing a pretty significant creative sector and added music to that group. And to date, we've actually given out more than $5 million, it's been $5.5 million, and we have actually committed to future, to another year of funding, so we'll be distributing $2 million more in grants this year.
Do you know if DCLA does any outreach in regards to that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do you know what kind of outreach?
They help us message out to their constituents to make sure that they're aware of the funding opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And other underrepresented communities in the film industry, including people of color and members of the LGBTQIA+ community, are not specifically named as recipients of Moam funding or as participants in Moam initiatives. Why is that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Sure. So, other underrepresented communities in the film industry, including people of color and members of the LGBTQIA+ community, are not specifically named as recipients of Moam funding or as participants in Moam initiatives. Why is that?
Oh, we can actually provide a breakdown of our grantees, happy to do that. You know, we're really, Equity has been a focus of the agency even prior to my arrival there, for sure. It was the basis for the founding of the Made in New York PA Program, for example. You know, our agency has really made Equity a priority in terms of creating opportunities for New Yorkers, particularly from those communities to participate in the film and television industry.
So internally, you are collecting that data, or at least have the metrics to be able to present them?
I'm reasonably certain that we do, and I'd have you to follow up with that.
Thank you, that would be very helpful. How does Moam ensure that major filmmakers and multimillion-dollar film studios are supportive partners for our city and the local artists and filmmakers who live and work here?
So, it's an ongoing dialogue with industry. You know, we know that this is what I affectionately refer to as a mobile manufacturing operation. You know, we're making movies, but they're making them not just at one place, they're making them throughout the city. And so, with that kind of engagement, we know that we need to continually communicate, not just with productions, but with the communities in which they're filming. I'd say, during the pandemic in particular, as I mentioned, film and television production was one of the first creative sector industries to return to in-person work, and we knew that we couldn't just have, you know, after being in lockdown, we couldn't have 200 people show up on a block all of a sudden, so we really worked very closely with the state as well as the industry to figure out a way to transition them back. And that was a conversation that we had, not just with the film studios, but also with soundstages, unions, other stakeholders. And so, that experience is what sort of created the model for this Film and Television Industry Council, which I think is going to be really important, already has been, in ensuring that we have the broad perspectives of the industry, because it's not a monolith, right? Like, everyone comes at it from a particular, from their particular space. But to help us understand what their needs are, but also to engage in this ongoing dialogue between government and industry about how to grow this industry in partnership with communities, in partnership, frankly, with city council as well. You know, we really do rely on you to help keep us informed about how your communities work, how the districts work, how do we connect these productions to businesses in your community. So that's, I think, we, that's inherent in the work that we're doing.
I'm glad to hear that that's a conversation in progress and something that is more fluid than, you know, a concrete system in terms of what is going on, but has there been any, or have there been any investments from these major filmmakers and studios back into our local artists and organizations that you know of?
I mean, beyond the direct spend of the productions, and also through the Made in New York Marketing Credit Program. I mean, beyond the direct spend of the productions and, and also through the Made in New York Marketing Credit Program, the, you know, one, so one production might invest, I know that there's one production that invested like close to half a million dollars just by location fees for, and when we're talking about location fees, we're talking about churches that they're using for holding, craft services, that kind of thing. And so, yes, by and large, there is a pretty significant investment by these productions in the communities where they're filming.
Commissioner, thank you so much for answering my questions. Before I pass it on to another one of my colleagues, I do want to acknowledge that Majority Leader Keith Powers is here. And I'll turn it over to Chair Amanda Ferias. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for, thank you, Commissioner, for your public testimony and for being here today. I'll just jump into some of the EDC-ish related questions. So around the, the tax incentives themselves, I, I did want to ask about how you view some of the tax incentives that are already out there? And if you can kind of give us from your point of view, what, what do they mean for New York City? And what does it mean for either its expansion or what is proposed right now at the state? I know that's not city-related per se, but it, it does have a city impact.
So the, the tax incentive has been a pretty critical piece in growing the industry here. You know, the, when they, when the tax credit was revised a couple of years ago, it went from 30% to 25%. And I think that has contributed to some of the decline that we've seen. Because as that went down, other jurisdictions went up. Just one example, The Joker filmed, the first Joker filmed here in New York. But the second Joker is actually now based in New Jersey because New Jersey's offered such a strong competitive tax credit. The, another one, The Flight Attendant had its first season here. California lured that away with their tax credit. So we're, we're facing competition from all over. And it's not just the state. It's also like worldwide. A Quiet Place had filmed the first two installments of that film in, in New York, but they're filming the third one in London. So it's, it's, it's a very competitive marketplace right now. And so we do view the tax, the state tax credit enhancements as something that could be really pivotal in, in drawing some of these projects back to New York.
Sure. Thank you for that. And have you envisioned, or do you now envision some of the work that you're doing in terms of the state regarding the taxes and incentives are like being introduced this year in the state budget? Do you view yourself as having an active role? Or on the mayor's side and the admin, having an active role in, in ensuring that we see a more competitive credit for New York City?
Yes, we, we are in full support of the enhancements to the tax credit. You know, for our part, on the city level, like, we know that we need to up our game in terms of, and that, that's partly why we created the Film and Television Industry Council, to, you know, engage partnership from industry, to make, make production work more smoothly in New York. It's why the mayor issued Executive Order 21 to require all agencies to appoint a liaison that we can work with and get better coordinated about landing productions here. And also frankly, why we recruited Deputy Commissioner Amoku, who has 30 years of experience in production, but also years of experience in government managing production. And so we feel like with, with that combination plus the tax credit, like, we can really continue to build on the success story of film in New York.
Great. And are there any other ways that we're working to ensure that New York City remains competitive with the other? You know, at least a competitive place for, as a competitive location for film and media companies? At least in direct competition with what you're saying, as Georgia, California, and New Jersey are now offering similar incentives?
I'm sorry, can you?
Is there anything?
Else that we can be doing?
Else that we are doing currently to remain competitive?
You know, it's, it's looking at our policies. It's really anticipating some of the changes to the city landscape, you know, talking to production and, and building and, and making sure that we continue to have a competitive workforce, right? Like, that's, that's what's behind our workforce programs, is making sure that we have a strong bank of talent so that when productions come here, they get exactly what they need. You know, one of the, one of New York's claims to fame with film production in particular is that you can literally do everything you need to for film here in New York, from writing to doing your red carpet premiere. And we want to continue to keep that, keep that allure of the city when people are thinking about where to bring their productions.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, all of us want to at least keep as many pipelines as we can. And this is one industry that we see, we, we kind of sort of have that pipeline already in place. So in terms of like local hire, what is MOM doing? I know you said a little bit earlier that, you know, we have liaisons for every other agency. So can we talk a little bit about, you know, what we're doing, or at least what MOM is doing in connection with other agencies to increase or ensure film crews or, you know, stages are local hired?
It's, it's kind of a scaffold, like, I view it as scaffolding, right? We have career exploration in, in elementary and middle school. And then middle and high school, we're, we're looking at internships. You know, we work with DYCD on the Summer Youth Employment Program. We work with many of our stakeholders to create placements for those interns over the summer, for those job placements. We, we work with CUNY on, at the Fierstein School, and then also Lehman. But really, I think, and then we also reach out to them to do recruitment for our programs, like the Production Assistant Training Program, like the POST Program. And I'm very proud of the fact that those programs have over 90% placement rates, which is not very common. And so we're, we're very committed to continuing to build that pipeline. The Film and Television Industry Council is very much a part of that conversation. Workforce is a very clear focus. And, you know, we've, we've found real commitment on the part of industry to work with us to, to build these talent pipelines. And if you want to speak to some of that, Kwame, that'd be great.
Sure. So diversity in the workforce and making sure that it's local people here is a priority for us. We're working to triangulate between labor, the end user providers, studios and networks, and nonprofit programs that we work with in order to coordinate a workforce pipeline that especially emphasizes diversity, right? And I like to say that I won't be happy until the crews look like the subway cars here in the city of New York. And I think there's an enormous amount of untapped talent here. And I think that there, everyone is ready to up the ante as far as diversity and inclusion here.
Sure. And so in terms of diversification, I mean, yes, 100%, you know, that's part of our goal, I think, as a city. I think that is, that mantra or the thing that you're using to say, we want to make sure our film sets or our productions look like the subway cars, or the people that are hired look like our subway cars. But also, you know, from my lens, I'm, I'm always wondering how the city is actually looking at each workforce and all of the titled positions within that workforce, right? Like, yes, this is definitely a creative sector, and so our brains always immediately go to, who can be on a production set, who can be a P.A., who can be a, a gafter, who can be the writer, et cetera, et cetera? But also, we need like, direct, like, everyone needs a driver's license, right? Everyone, we, we need a bunch of folks that can do a Class A commercial driver's license because every film set needs to move a truck. So for me, I'm, I'm wondering if there are discussions within the admin, within MOM, or within MOM and conversations with other agencies, where we are, yes, looking at career exploration at fifth grade, and then when we get them into a career in technical high school like Alfred E. Smith, and they're working on, you know, trucks or cars or learning how to be mechanics, how do we direct them into a route where they can get a Class B driver's license and be a part of the theatrical Teamsters and work on sets in New York City, and we keep them here in New York? So are we looking at the sectors in this way? And are we finding the, the gaps and, and the vacancies? And how are we connecting that to job training?
We, we are, the, those conversations are happening. And again, happy to get back to you with more specifics on that, but those are, it's all, it's all part of the strategy.
Great. I'd love to talk more about that offline. What percentage of local hires are union labor? Do we know?
I don't know. I would have to get back to you on that.
Sure. And?
If I may, Chair, one of the things that I would say too is, we're, to your point about looking at other skill sets, you know, that, that was kind of how animation came about as well, right? Because we see an opportunity, it's not just in film, there's also this emerging industry here, industry sector of video games. And we see opportunities for students in that space. And so we're, we're constantly looking at different areas where we can expand our outreach and training and education so that all of the different types of jobs that could be filled. I mean, I know that there's also demand for financial accountants. And, and so those are conversations that we're also having right now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I feel, you know, a lot, a lot of times we get really stuck in tunnel vision on like, we know this is a creative sector, or we know, you know, this is carpentry, and we're not actually interconnecting how someone can totally do carpentry for five years, but then move directly into another title in a completely different sector because that skill set is transferable?
We actually, sorry, did, with, with Realworks and IATSE, there was a, a training for hairstylists to learn how to do that on set. So those are, you know, so they're already certified hairstylists, and then learning how to transfer those skills to a set. And so those are other areas that we're also continuing to explore.
Great. Thank you for that. And so I just wanted to quickly, if we can jump into like scouting and managing some of the sites, if possible. So I know you mentioned some of your role in, in MOM on helping identify sites for filming productions or manage them. And I mentioned in my opening statement, some of the disruptions that happen. And so I'd just like to know if we've looked at ways to minimize some of that disruption in the day-to-day operations? And then, on top of that, have some of those ways that we've looked to mediate, been more innovative and creative? Because I do know, at least many of us know, that sometimes a production shoot has a shorter, way shorter timeframe than the average person like myself would like to know ahead of time when something like that is in community. So how are we actually getting ahead of some of that? Or are we now looking at different ways to help with local outreach and mediation in those disruptions?
I, I would like to start by saying, I am the first to admit that the industry grew exponentially. And we weren't necessarily able to keep up with that growth. And so we, we have been playing catch-up a bit, right? Especially since our agency mandate expanded at exactly the time that streaming was taking off, right? And so some of the items that I've, the, the steps that we announced last year with the mayor to create this Film Industry Council, to bring on Kwame, to establish the Executive Order, all of that is with an eye towards improving our communications, the way that we're managing production, the way that we're engaging with all of you. I've had an opportunity to meet with you and some of your colleagues, but I know that we still have yet to, I have yet to make the full rounds. Because that's, that's a big part of how we're going to be able to manage production well throughout the city is in partnership with you, understanding what some of the quirks are for each of the neighborhoods, but then also helping you understand like how these productions work. Television series, being a television town is great in the sense that we have year-round production, right? And it's a year-round employer. But it also means that there are certain locations that become part of a character and a story that they're going to go to. And so we're very mindful of that. But, you know, with all of that, I would love for my colleague Kwame to talk through how we actually permit production throughout the city.
Thank you, Commissioner. So first of all, I'd just like to say, New York City is an amazing city to film in. It's incredibly dynamic. I have, from production, worked all over the world. And I know for a fact that there are locations that have challenges that are difficult to overcome. And you go to New Zealand to shoot Lord of the Rings, or you go to a desert or a swamp. New York is like that. It's, it's very unique in that there's really no blanket policy that can cover the entire city because each part of the city is unique. So every project that comes to us, we approach in pre-production to get the idea of what it is they need. Then at that point, they will come to us, we'll have a meeting with them, they'll break down their shooting schedule to us and let us know where they're going to be. They'll download all of their information and logistics to us. At that point, it'll come into the hands of what's called a coordinator. That coordinator will take a look at their production, find out where they want to land, and get all the information from how many trucks they have, what the size of their crew is, what the actual action is. And they'll look at each individual location and analyze that location and check it for conflicts, conflicts with other events, conflicts with construction, with, with other things that might be happening in the area. There's an entire review process that happens before the application is even submitted, before the permit is even submitted, that allows us to kind of troubleshoot and get ahead of a lot of those issues that you're talking about ahead of time. It's a very meticulous process. I'm very involved in a hands-on level. I like to go out and scout with the productions ahead of time to take a look at for major stunts and major impacts. So what we're doing is taking a look at each situation at a case-by-case basis, analyzing it, and coming up with the best possible solution for production to interact. Part of the process of production is flash notification. So when a person enters into information into the application, that information goes directly to the council members, to the assembly members, to the Borough President's Office, and to everyone else who needs to know if there's FDNY involved, or a pyro stunt, and they're involved. We're also coordinating with all the other city agencies that might be involved. So if you're shooting on public property, you might need de-cats. Or if we're doing a larger event, then we might need, might need to coordinate that with CECM. So there's an entire process that happens before the permit is ever actually put in that is involved with us reviewing the permit and making sure it's the least amount of impact possible.
Sure. I, I appreciate that answer. I'm, so I'm more, what I will say is, right? When I, when my office gets the flash response, I'm grateful to get it. And I'm like, oh, cool, this is happening in the district. Who in that vicinity do I know that I can help notify to get the word out, right? That like, maybe there's, if it's even needed, right? Some stuff like filming, walking down the street, like, I, I read it to kind of see what it is. I, I worked previously as a staffer in the council, and we were close to Broadway stages. And we had all sorts of things. We had to warn people, like noises. So I'm always like, let me read this document to make sure if I need to warn anyone, I can give them a warning. But what we've seen, I think, at least through the pandemic, the city has a lot of unique ways that we can notify people. Have we considered using Notify NYC, like, down the, the pipeline of how to do outreach to people within a certain zip code or within a certain neighborhood radius to kind of help the productions and the, and the sets that are going to happen in the locality? Because realistically, like, when we all came into these seats, we weren't given every single registered voter or every single household's contact information. So even coming to me, going to the Borough President, I don't want to say it's not meaningful, but it's, you know, one other way that we can help with outreach. But realistically, we are not making a large impact in notifying residents. Like, you know, I am a consistent watcher of Law and Order. If I can tell everyone in this room, make sure you watch it. We need to keep it in New York City. But I know that I, I'm, I'm in the Bronx. I'm rarely going to get a Law and Order set. I'm rarely going to see a consistent production in my district. So when we get it, I'm excited for it, and I want it to continue. But I do know that it's hard to navigate the back-and-forth communication with residents because there is no other way unless my team and I took a day or two to not, door-knock that area or to, you know, to, to fire that area to inform people. And then we still have to like prepare for the phone calls to explain what's going to happen. So I've been thinking about this in the way of like, how could we use, you know, the database of 311 Services where we know there are people making complaints? How do we get ahead and inform them? Or we, we just got super proactive and got Notify NYC, you know, alerts out there where people can choose to opt out. But we still have a dataset of people where we can say, hey, if you need more information, here's the contact information, or ask your, your council member's office, or a film set is coming your way. We're excited. We hope you are too, kind of thing.
There's a little bit of a balance in that though, right? Because, well, some of it has to do with the technology, which I think we'll have to look at. But there's also, I, I think where we want to focus is on making sure that we're doing the work ahead of time to sort of... to sort of make sure that the productions, if they're holding parking, if it's going to take, because that's the other thing, it's like, we're only thinking about the things where they're holding parking or doing a stunt. But sometimes the, the shoots are very small, right? And you wouldn't even know that, like, if it's one, if, if there's one vehicle there that requires parking, like, I don't know that you want to notify the whole neighborhood about that, right? So that's, that's part of it. But there's also, I lost my train of thought. We, one of the things that I committed to when I came into office was recognizing that we needed a more robust intergovernmental and community affairs liaison. And the hope was that we could expand that department so that we could really get ahead when we're meeting with productions, when we're having pre-production meetings, that if they are going to be holding a significant amount of parking, they are supposed to be notifying, productions are supposed to be notifying the communities, posting letters, and, and posting notices so that it's, so that it's in advance, right? It's not a surprise, like you'll see signs go up. And, and then at the same time, our intergov team, we're, we're a team of one at the moment, we were a team of two, but is working, like if we know that there's a particular, like if there's a particular area where we really need to, or, or the shoot is of a scale that we, we're reaching out to you in advance of that so that we can notify residents. I know that we've, the way that the system is set up right now, it is to borough presidents, state and local elected officials, and community boards. We can, we can look at if there's a way to finesse that more in the system. That's certainly something that we can start to explore. So I'm not saying, what I'm saying is, we will look at that and continue to work with your offices to make sure that you're aware of what we're doing in the district.
Sure, I appreciate that. I only made that note because again, like, we all have a limited capability of outreach, and we did a really great job during the pandemic with Notify NYC. And people are already signed up to those kind of notices, and it's just another, just another way to think of it. I only have a few more questions before I turn it over to, to my colleague. Are there programs in place to encourage film and production crews to patronize local businesses while filming onsite and nearby? And if not, would Moam be open to developing such a program?
We've been doing it on the basis of when we know that they're going to go into certain neighborhoods to make sure that they're doing outreach that way. We don't have a formal process, but it's, it's something that we are consistently, continually trying to refine and, and come up with a, a better way of connecting productions to, to local businesses. We've actually had a number of conversations with small business services to see if there's a way that we can sort of tap into their databases and, and figure that out. So it's, it's very much top of mind and part of the discussion in improving the way that we have production in New York.
Okay, great. And my last question before I turn it over. How are we, if we are at all, leveraging the needs of the film industry to help prioritize, update local infrastructure? Like stop signs, roadway improvements, and more? I ask this question because there's been plenty of examples, I think, as local council members that we've seen where local production's coming in, or some sort of location is being set up to be, to have production, and it's recommended by either the production set that's there or the staging location that they need stop sign to help, or they need roadway improvement, and that somehow gets more expedited than our request from our office. And so what brings that top to mind for me is, outside of these small instances, is there a way that we can be leveraging local infrastructure priorities while also still being able to support the production that's happening?
I'm not aware, and I'm happy to look into it and come back to you, I'm not aware of an on-location production being able to request those changes. I know that in instances where we've had like a new soundstage go up, maybe that, in that instance, like a stop sign has gone up, and that's out of concern of the safety of production vehicles moving in and out. But I, I'm more than happy to have further conversation to see, you know, where those instances have happened, and if there is a way that we can facilitate that.
Sure, and I'm sorry, I forgot one other question that I have, two things. Can you discuss the permit fee structure for productions?
Yes. So currently, the permit fee is, it's actually an application fee. It's, and again, this is part of our, it's a system that we've inherited and that we are looking at revising. But it's a $300 application fee, regardless of what kind of production you're doing. If you're applying for a film permit, it's, it's $300. And that, do you want to speak to the, or actually, do you want to speak to the structure of the film permit fees? Yeah, yeah, currently?
The, the film permit fee, as the commissioner said, is currently $300, and that's what we call a project application fee. The project application, the project itself may consist of numerous permits. Like, for example, if it was an episodic television show, it would be the permits issued during the entire season. Or it could be for like a short shoot, it could mean just a couple of permits.
Okay, so just for clarification, we're positive, I was under the impression that it could potentially be a $500 fee?
We're looking at revising the structure moving forward.
Okay, so it's 300 right now, we're looking at revising it? And right now, is there a, is it just 300 for the entire shoot, whether it takes two weeks or six months?
Yes.
And there isn't a, are we looking at revisions around
Yes.
that being more fees over a certain amount of time?
Yes, we are. It's been published in our regulatory agenda that we're considering introducing a, a new rule to increase the fee. And, and to actually change the structure.
Okay, can we talk about what's, what's proposed right now?
We, we haven't submitted, we haven't begun the Kappa process yet. So it, it hasn't been published.
Okay, great. And then in terms of the $300 permit application fee, what does Moam use it for? How is it being utilized?
It goes into the general.
Right, the, the, the permit fee goes into the general fund.
The good old general fund? And do we know if a percentage of that goes to hiring more, more permit coordinators or anything like that, just goes into the general fund, and we hope it comes back to our industry? Yes, okay, all right, thank you. And at, at this point, I will stop and turn it over to Councilmember Gutierrez, Chair Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chair. Well, thank y'all once again for holding it down for the city agency side and for taking some of these questions. While they might not directly pertain to Moam, we're certainly appreciative that you're here. And so my role as the, the Chair for the Tech Committee is to work with you all specifically with Moam, so I'm, it's a privilege to be here. I want to start off with a little bit about the roles and what falls under Moam. And Commissioner, I think you did a great job with both chairs' questions on kind of explaining like what you all do, the breadth of Moam. My question is specifically related to outreach that Moam does with regard to, for, to small filmmakers, specifically small filmmakers of color. If you could just say for the record, I know that there's like a personal commitment, but what are some of the examples that you can share that Moam as an agency does, or examples of, of outreach to both small filmmakers and filmmakers of color?
So our outreach is pretty vast in the sense that we work with film festivals, right, that we know are attended by, and it's a range of film festivals, that some of them are hyper-local, and then some of them are like Trebek and the New York Film Festival. But the hyper-local ones are where we're really, we've, we've actually made a concerted effort to really support them and raise their visibility. And when there's opportunities for our office to speak and present and help, we'll, we'll attend those and talk to them about the various resources that are available to them at the city. We also, the New York State Council on the Arts has a media arts group that meets fairly regularly, and that is comprised of all of the media arts organizations throughout the state of New York, but a large concentration of them are here in the city. And we are working with them to become more actively involved in that because we know that they reach a lot of the independent filmmakers. For a long time, independent production really is actually the majority of feature film production. That, prior to the pandemic, it, it was about 80% of feature film production in New York. Some of the changes to the tax credit, and then some of the COVID impacts have really sharply reduced the amount of independent production that takes place here. And so with Kwame here now, and with, with the, you know, sort of understanding how these impacts are working, we're really trying to do much more outreach to those communities to see how we can bring some of that back.
Thank you. And in, in that same spirit, is there, what is the, the agency's capacity for language access in these instances where you are doing outreach in some of these smaller festivals? We've got a great film festival in Bushwick every fall. But just curious, if you all are out there doing the work, do you encounter, you know, issues of having to have language access available? And how do you all solve for that?
Do you want to talk about some of our language access work?
You could tell me no, and then we'll work on it.
Yeah.
But what do you?
I mean, we've, so what I would say is, I know that we've done work in, like we've participated in some of the, I'm vaguely bilingual. So we've, we've done outreach to some, so some of the festivals will go and will, will participate in some of the Spanish-language festivals. But we have yet to really translate all of our materials in, for some of these festivals and for some of these organizations. So that is something that we can work on. We haven't, it hasn't been, we, we haven't been, I'll just admit, we haven't really been focused on that, but that is certainly something that we can look into moving forward.
Yeah, just as far, as far as outreach and making that connection. I know every year, maybe not during the pandemic, but there was an annual Colombian Film Festival, there's an annual Dominican Film Festival.
And we sponsor those.
Yeah, just like language access. And I think that in turn also helps just kind of do outreach to even to those communities about understanding the role that you all have.
That's actually some of the, that, that was the work that I was alluding to, and I, and I made that meticulous comment about being vaguely bilingual because I remember going to, we go to the Dominican Film Festival, for example, very often, and we do, we, we try to have a presence at these festivals so that they can put a face to the agency. But the other thing that we've been doing with them that I think is actually, has been very helpful to these smaller organizations in particular is we do community and media ad buys, community and ethnic media ad buys for some of the smaller festivals so that they can reach a larger audience and reach more constituents, and, and, and therefore make our presence more known as a resource for some of these filmmakers.
Absolutely, thank you. My next question is related to a little bit kind of going off on, on what my, my chairs had also brought up, just communication. So my questions specifically are, is about communication between Moam and other agencies, both at the city and state. I had shared with you earlier that especially in my district, we have a ton of, you know, just development going on constantly. But right now, we've got this huge MTA project along the L. I went over there with my staff, there were some MTA issues, and then we noticed that there was also orange signs up for filming. And I thought, hey, this is a, this is a perfect example of where government really just need to talk to one another to better coordinate. So can you share a little bit with me about what those conversations look like, especially as you're approving some of these permits? Just so that we have a better sense of how to just in turn give that, give that response to our constituents?
So we, our system is tied into a citywide events database, and that is largely where we get our information from about other projects that are happening around the city. With the liaisons as well, we're, we're starting, we're starting to have more direct conversations with them so that there's an ongoing engagement with other agencies to understand what projects they have coming down the pike. The mayor also just recently announced the appointment of a public realms czar, which we're very excited about because I think that will also help facilitate some of the conversations and coordination throughout the city.
Thank you, Commissioner. And does Moam receive any, or, and share data with any other agencies? Is there any reason that they, that your agency has to share any data with other agencies in this process?
The, the information is all in this centralized database system, but there's some pieces that we don't have access to. Like, I don't, I don't think MTA is part of that because it's state. But milling and paving is on there, yes.
And maybe it might not have to be specific to, you know, approving a project application, but just in other, just any, any examples of where you all share, share data with other agencies?
Well, we're, we're constantly sharing information based on the application process, but also, a lot of what happens comes in discovery from production. If production is there and they notice a construction sign, or they notice some construction equipment, or they notice a permit, then we'll coordinate with them to get that information to production as well as to make sure that construction is notified. I know that we are working on better coordination within the system, and that is something that OTI and CECM are working together to help to make sure that we are all connected. Therefore, deconfliction will happen almost instantaneously once we enter information into the system. So it's a work in progress.
Thank you. I just want to pivot a little bit on the, kind of the community communication piece, just one question. How does Moam communicate with production studios and handle requests for complaints or issues with film and TV production? So at some point, I'd, I'd love to understand if and when a 3-1-1 complaint is made, how that gets communicated, if, if it does. I know it's a little, it's a little less seamless than someone just calling the number that's on the sign, right? And so I'm curious to know kind of where, where and how that lands. But right now, can you just walk us through the process? If there is a complaint called directly to, to the production assistant, I believe, onsite or whoever's information is on that form, how does that get handled by the, the company?
By the company? I mean, I'll let you speak to that. On our end, we do get referrals from 3-1-1, and we also get direct calls to our office. And sometimes what will happen is they'll call the PA, and they'll also call our office. And so we'll outreach to the production right away, we'll, we'll, and, and see what the issue is, and typically we'll resolve it right then and there. But if you want to.
So when these complaints come in, they're usually filtered through community affairs, but infinitely, we notify.
Through PD's community affairs?
Through our community affairs.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sorry, through Moam's community affairs.
My ears went up, okay.
So also, what we do is that we contact the production and notify them, and we interact with them immediately as soon as we get the information, and we, we require that they correct whatever the issue is. We also have field inspectors that go out to all of these locations, and they're making sure that they're staying within the footprint of the permit, and that they're not violating any of the Code of Conduct. If they are, then they notify production immediately to correct these instances.
And can you just repeat the name of the, the role of field?
Field representatives.
Field representatives.
And they are mandated to check out the site every how often?
It, it varies depending on what the action is. It's, it's really to the discretion of, of Moam to see what kind of, if it's two people walking down the street having a conversation, that's something that we might deprioritize over a large stunt or a large event that's going on. So we'll go and make sure that this, and other larger footprint productions, we're going to go inspect those more frequently than with smaller footprint production.
And does this, this person, through the Code of Conduct, are they also assessing anything else with relation to how the film is looking in the community, how it's impacting community? Or is it just simply to follow the code of, like, relation to their application? Like, making sure they're doing what the application said versus like how they're interacting with the community?
No, they, they make sure that they're following all the policies that the Code of Conduct is policies that are made to protect the public and to protect residents. And so definitely, any issues that would result in conflict with residents or businesses is addressed by the field representative.
Got it. Can I, and I'd like to just ask a question on behalf of some folks in my community. This would help kind of put this on record for folks. How soon can folks from a production team, for example, start telling constituents, hey, you can't park your car here? So the scenario is, the signs go up maybe two days before, right? What I have heard from constituents, it's that cones will start coming down way before that paper says. And so I guess what my question is like, what is the, what is the actual rule there? How early can they do it? How soon before? And again, the parking is, is a complaint that I hear, but I certainly, you know, I, I want to continue to support the production team. So what is, what is the rule here, so we can have it on record?
They're not allowed to take the permitted area before their permit starts, so.
Okay.
If there are instances in which they've coned off an area ahead of time, or unless we've made a special. we've made a special arrangement with them because of the size of the footprint or maybe it's a major stunt and we need to clear it out earlier. But usually it's, it's when they arrive for production, it's when they will start moving cars and towing things. Now, sometimes there's exceptions, but residents should feel free to report instances like that to us and then we'll correct that immediately.
And then, I'm sorry.
What I will say though, and I'll admit, like I think that was a practice that was started partly because we lost our tow unit for a while, right? And so it was very difficult for productions to land if cars wouldn't move. And since we didn't have the tow unit to move the cars that were not supposed to be where they were, I, there was a practice that was started where people would hold parking. I'm not saying it's right, I'm just explaining the rationale behind it. And that's in large part why we've been able to advocate successfully to bring back the tow unit. And so between that and, you know, more informed communication and adherence to the code of conduct, we hope to see improvements in that.
Thank you. And can you also just clarify how or what role Moam plays in situations where parking has to be removed, but they are loading zones or a business could potentially be impacted if for some reason it's a business that's open at night and it's a nighttime shoot? Can you just explain how that is solved for?
So they're not allowed to take just any parking. They, they have to do it within the bounds of the regs as well as take into account handicap spots, loading zones, driveways. They have to interact with the public and make sure that they're not blocking anything or stops.
But that onus, but that onus falls on them, the applicant. It's not a, it's not a part of the process, the review process, for example, that Moam, they're looking at, okay, they want to be on Wilson Avenue, let me make sure that.
Yes, it is.
It is part of Moam's process.
Checking the regs is a part of the process, definitely.
Great, great, great. Thank you. My next question is related to locations of, of sound stages, sound studios in the city. District 34, we have a, a very sizable industrial area. We have a number of studios in the district. So my following questions are just going to be related to kind of to that industry. A big piece of my advocacy, along with some of my colleagues, is to retain manufacturing jobs. I do love that the studios are in the IBZs. Can you share a little bit about what the, the average wage for a, a motion picture worker or a video production worker is?
That could vary. I mean, it, one thing about a, a, a film crew is that there's such an amazing diversity of roles, right? So everywhere from a production assistant who might make $200 a day, anywhere to a cinematographer who can make, you know, fifteen hundred, $2,000 a day. It varies based on those positions.
Okay. And how often would you say these workers experience an increase in those, in that very variation of wages?
That's very dependent on the collective bargaining agreement because most of these are union, union jobs. And so that's based on the collective bargaining agreement between the labor and the, and the supplier and user.
Okay. So the reason I, I ask these questions is because of how valuable I do think industrial jobs are to the city of New York. The average wage is well over $85,000. Almost eighty percent of the workforce are people of color. So my advocacy is always to say if we are utilizing this manufacturing space for technically non-manufacturing uses, that these jobs are, are, I think proportionate to the salary that these workers are making. So that's why I, I raise that question. In your experience, have you had any issues shooting or working or getting situated in these industrial business areas because of the nature of, of the manufacturing work? As I understand it, twenty-two out of the fifty-four sound stages are in IBZs in the, in the city.
Yeah. Have we had any issues with them being there?
Have you all, or to your knowledge, not in Moam, but any of the applicants or sound stages, like have there been any direct issues correlated with the work that they're trying to do versus the work that some of these manufacturings? I mean, in my district, Netflix is down the block from a cement.
Yeah.
Factory. So, you know, I'm not, Netflix has more than enough money to soundproof their studio, but my question is, do you run into that as you're working with some of these sound stages?
Not really.
No. It's a happy marriage in the IBZ. Okay, great. Thank you. My next question is a little bit off of what Chair Fadias had brought up, just about notification to neighborhoods and Commissioner, I know you mentioned early that there's been, I think, a lot of work put into how you transform communication. So if you could just one more time or just emphasize how you all think you are now engaging differently with communities, especially coming back from the pandemic? What are some of the, the things that you're really like proud of that you're doing better now? Because I know that there was a disconnect for a little while.
Well, so now that Kwame has been installed, I, we've, we've certainly engaged in more pre-production meetings with the actual productions to help them, to help them understand how they need to engage with communities. And I think that is making a significant difference between, it's, it's not just Kwame, it is also Josh Levin, our, our head of Intergov and Community Affairs, but also being proactive about getting to know council members and the districts and your priorities. We're a little bit behind because I was not here for the first six months of my tenure. And so we're catching up a little bit in terms of getting to know each of you, but I've, I've already seen some pretty significant changes in the way that we're engaging productions in the community conversations and helping acclimate them. And there was a, there was a period of time where we weren't really able to do pre-production meetings and I think that impacted the way that we were able to land productions. And we've, we've reinstated that practice and I think that's gone a long way. And if you want to add anything, Kwame?
You know, I think the pre-production scouting and interactions with, with these crews before they even touch down or apply for the permit, I think has been very helpful in helping us to de-conflict and get ahead of issues and be proactive. I think just being proactive and staying in communication with council, with borough presidents and with bids is key to making sure that these productions can land with little impact.
Thank you. And have you been able to, to have those discussions with all fifty-one council members or making your way?
Making our way around.
How, how far along? What's the fraction?
I'm not sure.
Please don't say two.
No, 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 it's certainly more than that.
Okay. Yeah, I think there's a lot, like Chair Fadias mentioned, I think there's a lot to gain from like even the way that we as members communicate with, with our communities. And also we live in our districts, right? And so there's a very unique perspective and that we can offer and how to engage and do outreach. And I think it's more than just outreach to like inform a community that there's a movie coming. It's also about jobs and it's also about kind of working together to get that message out there that here's this very robust industry that thrives on filming right here on your block and this is how you can become connected to, to jobs. Is there a different outreach protocol that Moam utilizes for outreach related to, to jobs versus filming in the community?
For me, it's all tied in. Like when we're coming to meet with you, it's not just about like what problems are you experiencing in film? It's to really give you a sense of the, the breadth of programs that we're running because we want your constituents to know about them and we want to make sure that you're aware that we have these educational training programs that we're working with these, this variety of festivals or conferences in your neighborhood. That's very much a part of the outreach.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. I just have a couple, a couple more questions and then we'll, we'll, we'll be done. I had a question regarding the code of, of conduct and I guess the assessment that are made from the, the field folks that do this work. Do you have a sense of how many of these permitted productions are in violation of a portion of the code of conduct? Is that something that you all report on or can report on?
We'd have to look into that to get you exact numbers.
Okay. But are, is it, is there a scenario where like a violation is, is issued or what happens?
Yes. So our, our process for the code of conduct is, you know, depending on, I mean, if they resolve the issue right away, then, you know, that's corrected. But if it's, if, if it's not resolved and if it's a flagrant infraction of the code of conduct, then they will get a violation notice.
Okay. And then you, Commissioner, you mentioned earlier that you, you all have the responsibility of responding to 311 complaints and, and calls that come in directly to Moam. Do you have a set of what, how many, how many 311 complaints you've gotten maybe in the last year?
We would have to get back to you with that data.
Okay. I think that would be helpful. I know there's some members.
It's less than it was in previous years, which is great.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, because I know some members might, might bring, raise those questions. My next question is just related to, I think, a really hot button topic around hotspots. Can you just share what a filming hotspot, the definition of what a filming hotspot is and how you all designate that area? And what happens once a hotspot designation is made?
Sure. So the hotspot list is really one of the tools that we have to manage production in the sense that there may be an area that has a lot of filming, but it could also be because there's a lot of, there's a big construction project happening there or there've been a number of other types of events that have happened in a neighborhood. And so we're looking at that monthly or actually probably even more frequently than that frankly. And, and really trying to manage the level of production activity. Obviously around, you know, there are certain areas where there's going to be more production activity and so we really try to keep an eye on that. And Kwame, if you want to add to how we're managing the hotspot?
No, we're looking at areas that have been oversaturated and, and overabundance of filming and giving those areas a chance to, to breathe and, and to, with the exception of maybe a couple of episodic reoccurring locations. Once a location has been established in a, in an episodic, they need to keep that consistent. So also being able to preserve those episodic reoccurring locations requires us sometimes to put areas on the hotspot list. So we're definitely looking at places that have been oversaturated, that have been overshot basically.
Yeah. And is there, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, is there a number to that or?
There's not, there's no, there's no mathematical formula for it at this point.
Okay, just like if it feels alike a lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It might, it might be good to put a rubric on it. I think it's just helpful.
Well, it's, it, because the, again, as Kwame was saying, there's, each neighborhood is somewhat different. So a large concentration in, in industrial area where there is, it's not impeding business activity may not like have the same effect as if you're in a residential area. And so that's why we don't put like a specific number on it. We really do, it's a conversation that we have with the community, with, you know, with production, with just the patterns that we've observed. And I think we've, you know, there was a period of time when we weren't managing the hotspot list very well and we've been much more actively managing that on a regular basis. And I think it's, it's helped considerably. I just wanted to respond to your question about average pay for production and I should have thought of this because we did a study on this. But the average wage is $121,000.
That's really good. That feels really good. And that's why I think the communication piece on pathways is so important, but I think especially for someone that represents such a big piece of the industrial business zone, when there's a non-business use going in, I want to make sure that, you know, my constituents aren't losing out potentially on, on a proportionate income. So that's really good. I just have two more questions. One is just related to staffing. Can you share currently how many folks you have on staff for the Office of, of permitting or however you word it? But like how many people do you have on the Moam team that, whose like job is to review these applications?
So.
And do you need more?
For, we have, actually I can't keep track of how many permit we have now. So we have seven permit coordinators, five field representatives, one IGA, although hopefully that will change soon.
Look at Josh back there. I got you.
And then, and then support in the, in the sense of like our general counsel often has to review our policies. And then Kwame is leading that office. Overall, Moam has just under a hundred headcount to oversee five divisions.
Wow. And do you think the five, the seven people, excuse me, that you have to do processing, does that feel like enough at the rate to support, you know, the goals that you shared in your testimony?
We can always use more.
Yeah, you can just tell us. We want to support. You can just say we need more. And then my last question is just related to processing these project applications. I'm, I'm clear on, on the cost to the applicant is around three hundred and you're kind of reworking that structure, but do you have a sense of what it costs you all as Moam to, to review and process that?
No, actually.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you so much. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez. I do want to recognize more of my colleagues who have joined us during this hearing, Councilmember Aviles. And I want to pass the questioning off to Councilmember Dinwiddie.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Chairs, all the Chairs. Good afternoon. Do you have a breakdown of where, that you mentioned things like average salary and, do you have a breakdown of where the jobs are going by borough and by neighborhood?
We, we don't because the productions are shooting, it's, it's not like, when I say it's a year-round job, it's a, they're by show. And so they might relocate depending on, on where the shows are. We have a breakdown by, we do have a breakdown, our 2019 study does have a breakdown of, I think it has a breakdown of some of the different types of jobs that are within production. We're happy to share that.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I'd love to see that. I have a sneaking suspicion that proportionally fewer of the jobs and opportunities are in the Bronx. That's just how this city apparently works. And there, there's a few things. I do want to echo the concerns that some of my colleagues have said about when a production comes in, how that impacts, you know, things like parking, the quality of life and the local economy. And, and I may have missed this, but do you, do you provide any incentives or encourage the production to use local businesses for, for food and, and, and their storefronts and things like that?
In the, when we meet with productions, we, we really do try to give them an orientation to the neighborhoods that they'll be filming in. I, I do want to sort of clarify a little bit though, like not every production, we, we deal with such a huge range of productions, like some of them might be in a community for a day, whereas others might be there more frequently than that. And so we really try to calibrate the orientation based on the production and how long they're going to be in a neighborhood. But yes, we are actively working on trying to build more connections between the productions and local communities.
Yeah, it does, it, it, I, I think the word rubric was used earlier. It doesn't sound as though there's some sort of rubric. I mean, I just want to share that when productions come in, it feels like there's things taken from the community, you know, park, in, in my community, parking is a, a big one. We don't have a ton of access to, to public transit, but it doesn't feel as though enough is given back. But there's something even, I think, more important that's taken. You had a nice quote in your opening testimony, Commissioner. It says, "The artists who work in film and television production create images of our city that are unforgettable." And then you talk about it in a positive light, but then you also mentioned the movie Joker. I don't know if anyone's familiar with that movie. It's about a murderer and the famous scene is the Bronx steps where he's doing the dancing. And it feels like in film and television, there's a lot of negative stereotypes of the Bronx. You mentioned in your testimony about Brooklyn and Queens, dry cleaner and florist. We actually have dry cleaners and florists in the Bronx. We have families, we have workers, we have office buildings. And I'm wondering what efforts your office is making to improve the image of the Bronx if you're working with these production companies? How you're using the power of your office and your influence to steer productions towards some of the positive images and all the wonderful things the Bronx has to offer?
So we, we actually have some new studio projects that have opened in the Bronx and they're actively engaged in working with the community to engage them in some of the educational programs and work with some of the local businesses. And so that is something that we are really committed to is working with these sound stages in particular that we know that are going to be there to make sure that we're helping to facilitate those kinds of connections.
I'm glad to hear that. But specifically, is there any work your office is doing to sort of present a positive image of the Bronx and, and not the place where crime happens, which is typically the, what we see in TV and film?
What I like to say is, listen, I'm absolutely committed to building more workforce development programs and bringing more of that to the Bronx. I think it's really important. I was on the task force for racial inclusion and equity during the pandemic and I know how hard in particular the Bronx was hit. And that is a very big priority for me personally is to really try to build more equity in that space. As to content, we don't regulate content. That's not our job. Our job is to permit production. But what I also want to remind people of, because I get this, it's not just about the Bronx, like people get upset when they see that, you know, there's a, a story that shows New York in not such a great light. But what I say is for every image of the gritty city, there's also shows about the pretty city, right? There's, you know, for, for every crime show, there's also like Sex and the City or, you know, so people want to come here when they see the shows. So I, you know, I often say that people that I meet who are here in New York, their first experience very all. that people that I meet who are here in New York, their first experience very often is an image on a screen, and that's why they want to be here. And so I understand the concerns, but I also, you know, we can't be in the business of regulating content, we can just facilitate and make sure that our productions are doing well by the communities that they're filming in.
Well, I, I appreciate your commitment to workforce development, but I, I would say if, if production's not happening in the Bronx, and very pleased to hear about the studios, but there's other types of filming that happens outside the studios, then the workforce development is less likely to happen from the Bronx. And it did sound in your testimony like there is work you do with the productions, ensuring that they have what they need, and they, they tell you sort of the scenes they need, and, and it sounded like it came from Kwame, that's some of the work you do. And I am simply saying that if, that there are positive images, that you, you can help the Bronx, you can help the images and the negative stereotypes that are plaguing the Bronx by directing some of the productions of positive film towards the Bronx, and recognizing it as, as a beautiful place it is, that has all the wonderful things that we have all throughout the city, but is somehow still trapped in this negative stereotype, I think perpetuated by what we see on screen.
I would love to follow up with your office too, to understand, like get a better sense of some of the neighborhoods and locations where we could be recommending, I mean, we know that we need to do a better job of helping production identify new locations for some of the shows that they're doing, and so I think it would be great to meet with you and follow up and, and see how we can support that.
Great, thank you, thank you Chairs.
Thank you Councilmember Dinowitz. Also, just to add, if you want to tell the producers of The Joker that they can come to Bed-Stuy or Crown Heights, and Lady Gaga, that she can come, that'd be great too. Also, I remember when they did shoot in the Bronx, it brought a lot of tourists to, you know, that location, and I definitely hear your point, but I'm sure the small businesses are really happy about a lot of the attention that is coming over there too. Councilmember Ressler?
Thank you so much to all three of our Chairs, Gutierrez, and Ose, and Farias, I really appreciate your leadership on this issue and, and across the board. Oh, sorry, it's never something that is a problem for me. And thank you to the Commissioner and the team, appreciate you all being here today. I, I'll just start by saying, the film and television industry is a great asset for New York City, and we're fortunate to have a thriving film and television industry here that promotes our city, provides good jobs, and I really appreciate all that it does to contribute to promoting New York. My concerns have been around the regulatory framework that we have in place to manage the frequency of film and television shoots on the same block. For example, there are census tracts in my district that have had, I don't know, 300 film and television shoots permitted in a given month. That is an enormous amount of film and television activity in one census tract in one month. And the impact of many large trucks, of generators, starting at six or seven in the morning, is a real impact on a neighborhood. And it's one thing if it's happening a few times a week, a few times a month, it's another thing when it's happening hundreds of times in a month. And so the first question I just want to ask Commissioner is, is there a cap that the Mayor's Office of Media Entertainment puts in place or considers for the number of film and television permits that it will issue at a given location, a given block, a given census tract, a given neighborhood, in a month?
No.
No.
There is no cap. I do want to point out however, that in the census tract that you're referring to, you have a number of soundstages there, which would account for the increased amount of activity that you have in those particular areas.
Absolutely, and we're fortunate to have Steiner Studios and Broadway Stages in our district to do a lot of good, but what happens is, shoots from those studios, especially from Broadway State, you know, from different stages, will go out to the same locations again, and again, and again, and again, and again, and there are lots of parts of New York City that would really benefit from spreading the wealth around and having film and television shoots in their neighborhoods as well. So there's no cap on the number of shoots in a given location. My understanding of the city's policy in perpetu, you know, for many years now, has been, there's no cap, if people complain enough, a moratorium is imposed, and then we start all over again with complaints and complaints and complaints until another moratorium is imposed. Is that a fair, is that an accurate description of the city's policy?
Not entirely.
Okay.
You know, again, in the areas that you're describing, there are pretty significant soundstages there, and so there will be, and I mentioned that earlier, there will be a significant amount more of activity in those areas. It also, around the soundstages, but also in the neighborhoods around the soundstages because, you know, company moves are pretty significant, and so they will tend to film in the areas right around the soundstages. What I have also said is, we really want to work on identifying other locations, we haven't, we've been playing catch-up since the industry activity has increased exponentially. You know, we went from 30 shows to 80 in, in like five years, and so our office infrastructure had not kept up with that. So we fully acknowledge that we need to be better about working with productions to help them identify other areas, so I think that's part of it. The hotspot list is just one tool in our arsenal of tools that we use to manage production, where it's, it could be because of shoots, it could also be because of Public Works projects, because of development in the area.
I just want to, I only have a minute left, so is there anything, I don't mean to cut you off, but is there anything where you want to finish that thought?
I lost my train of thought.
I think you're, I hear you on Public Works projects and other things, and, and for example, your team has worked really well with us in Dumbo, where we've had a major neighborhood-wide infrastructure project to have a blackout period there, which we appreciate. I do want to recognize Local 817 and the Teamsters that have offered some really good suggestions to our office, and I think to your office as well, on how we can streamline operations more effectively, deploy smaller vehicles, take up less space, have less vehicles per department from a shoot that go out.
That's where I was going.
And, and it, good, I'm glad I beat you to the punch. But I, I really just want to, I know we've talked a little bit about this, I know it's something you all are looking at, and appreciate the conversation with you and Kwame, I, I just want to strongly encourage you to expedite that as quickly as possible, because we believe that smaller vehicles that have less of a footprint in our neighborhoods, that are making less noise, would make a big difference. The other big things that I just want to highlight as time expires are generators.
Yes.
The noise and the environmental harm that they cause are significant, and we need to quickly identify renewable solutions that can be deployed at scale, because I think it would have tremendously less impact on neighborhoods if we didn't have these big generators powering all of these vehicles and, and trailers and, and shoots. So we're certainly looking at legislative solutions, we know that there's some research being done on lithium-ion powered generators, we are very intrigued by this, we hope that that will be a major priority of your office.
It is.
The other, the last thing, and then I promise to shut up to the Chairs, is two final quick comments, we'd like to see more prioritization of local restaurants. We think there's too much catering that goes on and not enough engagement with the local restaurants in our community. We think Moam should be requiring and imposing that much more aggressively than currently happens. It would be helpful to support our local economy, our neighborhood economy, if there were deeper partnerships there. And then lastly, I just want to make a comment to the kind of industry advocates who have been engaging around the legislation we've introduced. No one has reached out to our office from any, on behalf of any industry, and you've mentioned to my colleagues that you've been trying to get my attention and that I haven't responded. We have received no emails, no phone calls, and I don't appreciate being lied about. And so I just want to say very plainly to the representatives of the industry advocates and to the industry advocates, if you'd like to talk to us, let us know. We've met with folks from the film studios in our district, we met with labor unions, we're happy to talk to anybody, but please do not misrepresent communication with my office moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you Councilmember Ressler. Councilmember Powers?
Thank you, nice to see you, thanks for testimony. I know it's a long day, so I'll try to be brief. I, I think that the concerns around, as Councilmember Ressler pointed out, about issues within the districts and where you shoot, and how the industry works are pretty well documented, and obviously you hear those from us all, all the time. So not going to bore anybody with that, although, you know, we've, I've always been, appreciate the relationship we've had with the agency and your ability to, you know, work with us. I'm going to go to a totally different direction, like you, I read your testimony and I see an industry that is just quintessential to New York City right now. It's the image of New York City, whether you like The Joker, you don't like The Joker, it is still, it's a tourism, local tourism for them, people come to New York, I see Councilmember Dinowitz in the back, whether you are in Law &amp; Orders of the world and so forth, but more importantly, it's not just what you see on the screen, it's the jobs this industry delivers, it is the local economy that gets supported by it, and yes, there are just local disruptions, but there also is a tremendous economic impact to businesses. And I say that because my father once owned a restaurant, and Law &amp; Order showed up and they filmed in it, and they, it was economic impact for my, my dad's business, we'll invite you to the next one. So I, I've seen it and I've, I've appreciated it. So I know there's a conversations in the state right now about incentives. What I'm actually more interested in is keeping those, that industry in the city. I know we have competition right over the, right across the river, I know we have competition outside the city, and we have competition all over the world, and while they can try to fake it's New York City and they do a good job on the sets, it ain't New York City and it ain't New Yorkers working on those. So I, I want this industry to shoot to the moon, I want to see this industry, and I, we have to attend to all the local issues, but I can tell you, I live up in Midtown, you can shoot in my district if you want to shoot in my district. I want this industry to do exceedingly well, because I think it is a foothold in the middle class for a lot of New Yorkers. I've seen it, I have people, I know people work on those sets, and they are, it is their, it is their path to the middle class and beyond. So I want to know, just a different question is, we need to do all the stuff to help address local issues, I want to know how in the city, and I appreciate the Mayor's viewpoint on this too, how we get this industry to continue to expand and grow, and how we make sure that those jobs stay here and we, we are competitive against anyone. I don't want Jersey taking jobs, I mean, if they are, they got to take New Yorkers to go work on them too, but I want them in New York City, so how do we do that, recognizing there are all the issues we have to attend to, I'm not ignoring those, but I want to know how we in the city can be good stewards for a very important industry, which you guys say is about 6% I think of our economy and economic development.
Thank you very much, and, you know, I think what we do is, so part, part of it is the tax credit, that's, I can't be more plain about that, that will certainly make us more competitive globally. But locally, I think it's really helping, it's, it's helping each other land production, and I hear the concerns, and we take them very seriously, and we are working on solutions for those. But just to, to, to make sure that the city is educated about how production works, what it brings to the city, it, again, the, the Mayor put forward Executive Order 21 so that we can work more, on a more coordinated basis with our, our city agency colleagues. The Film and Television Industry Council, I think, would, what I also envision that being is an opportunity for some of you to come and meet with them when we have our, our meetings with them, so that you can learn about what they're thinking, what they're, what they want to bring here, but just continuing to make sure that, yes, we know that it's challenging, but not having that volume of those complaints scare away production. That, that is a bit of a concern of mine, that, that we're able to have sort of more inside conversations among ourselves about how we're going to troubleshoot and solve some of the challenges that production is creating for the city. I think if we can do that somewhat offline, not in the public space, so that people really feel like New York does want production to come here, that would help tremendously.
And just one last question, and I'll hand it back. You, I noted a little bit about where your 2019 stats in terms of jobs production in your testimony, but I'm curious just to know where we are right now relative to pre-pandemic. I feel like this industry did a pretty good job of getting back on its feet, using testing and using other ways to make sure people are safe, but where do we think we are now when it comes to pre-pandemic versus post-pandemic?
So we were.
Or in mid-pandemic?
We were approaching pre-pandemic levels with television, film has not come back, and I think some of that has to do with the incentive. There's also a bit of a market correction right now in streaming, so we're seeing fewer projects being greenlit and coming here, and so those are all challenges that we need to overcome.
All right, my real last question, what's the most exciting production happening in New York City right now?
Oh, that would be you.
The Joker.
Thanks, I'll hand it back to the Chairs.
Great, now that there are no more questions from our colleagues, I'll pass it on to Committee Counsel for public testimony.
Thank you so much, this concludes the administration portion of this hearing, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next we will be moving to public testimony. We will start with three in-person panels. I'm going to read the names of everyone on those panels. If you are here to testify and have not submitted a witness slip, please do so to the Sergeant at Arms, which can be, who can be found at the front of the room. Again, as the Chair mentioned, we will be using a two-minute clock for testimony today. The first panel, again, I'll read all three. The first panel will be Arlen Valdivia, and apologies in advance for any mispronunciations, Charles Taylor, John Williams, and Charles Reynoso. If those individuals want to come to the table, we'll be moving to next. Again, it's Arlen Valdivia, Charles Taylor, John Williams, and Charles Reynoso. The next panel will be Doug Steiner, Lorken Ottway, Tyrell Hunt, and Huda Lazrak, and then the panel after that will be Donald Pecado, Ryan Ferguson, and Peter Capsilis. If you did not hear your name and are here to testify, again, please submit a witness slip at the front with the Sergeant. We'll let people move to the table, we're just transitioning now, and then we will begin with public testimony in one moment. Okay, and we'll just follow the same order on the list, so Arlen Valdiv, excuse me, Valdi, thank you, Valdivia, Charles Taylor, John Williams, and Charles Reynoso. So the clock is on the wall, and just make sure that the red light is showing on the microphone when you're ready. So we'll start with Ms. Valdivia, and you may begin your testimony when ready.
Chairpersons Ferris, Ose, and Gutierrez, and all Committee members, my name is Arlen Valdivia, and I'm the Senior Director for the Motion Picture Association. The MPA is a trade association for the leading producers, distributors of movies, television, and streaming series. MPA member companies are Walt Disney Studios, Netflix, Paramount Pictures Corporation, Sony Pictures Entertainment, NBC Universal, and Warner Brothers Entertainment. New York City is one of the epicenters of film, television, and streaming. The film and television industry has and continues to play a vital role in the city's development, both culturally and economically. According to a 2021 economic report commissioned by Moam between 2001 and 2019, employment in the motion picture and video production sector grew at an annual rate of 3%, outpacing the city's average job growth rate at 2% over the same period. This growth is attributable to factors such as the New York City skilled, New York City's skilled production workforce and the New York State Film Production Tax Credit. In 2021, the industry supported more than 100,000 jobs in, across New York State, and over 85,000 jobs in all five boroughs of New York City. By and large, these are, these are good-paying union jobs. Our member companies support and work with organizations such as Realworks, Getoff Film School, who train and mentor young adults and equip them with the tools and skills necessary to start a career in the creative industry. MPA and its member companies support programs like these to ensure that there's a pathway for New York's diverse youth to enter the film industry. The industry also creates $8.2 billion in economic output in transactions with suppliers and vendors. For example, in Councilmember Ressler's district, more than 2,000 local vendors are supported with production spending over $172 million. When filming on location, productions are resourceful and look to utilize community organizations and places of worship for catering and base camps. Thus far, the ongoing filming of season three of The Equalizer has contributed over half a million dollars to New York City's institutions, including more than $200,000 in churches throughout the five boroughs, and nearly $50,000 to community organizations and neighborhood associations. At any given time, oh, I will, just continue, I'm almost done, there are more than 80 productions actively filming, and we understand the frustration that this may cause, especially in highly filmed locations, and we look forward to working with Moam to find creative solution for these.
Thank you for your testimony, and just a reminder that all written testimony is meticulously reviewed. You can submit or amend your testimony up to 72 hours after the hearing, please submit it to testimony@council.myc.gov. The next witness will be Charles Taylor, you may begin when ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming out.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming out and allowing the space for me to speak. My name is Charles Taylor. I am a theatrical teamster, local 817 union member. I am a father of two and a New York City resident. I'm motivated to testify today and speak briefly about the exodus of productions and the increasing difficulty of shooting on location in New York City. Production is leaving means a crucial hit for many local businesses that they film in. Thousands of families and communities are being left without a magic that now, to this day, even me as an adult, still enjoy, the movie magic. I was born and raised in Crown Heights, Brooklyn, for my whole life, except for the two years I moved to Bed-Stuy. Currently, I reside back in Crown Heights, Park Place and Ocean, to be exact. I attended PS 138 Middle School, which now shares halls with Prospect Heights Success Academy, where my son is currently enrolled in the second grade. And I want to give much respect to Chi Ose, the councilmember for the New York City's 36th District, representing Bedford-Stuyvesant and North Crown Heights, who has assisted in promoting local economic development and strengthening our schools. He has also improved neighborhood sanitation and is re-imaging public safety, which makes filming on location and stages in New York City a lot better. Who would have guessed it? A program from the mayor's office of media and entertainment called Made in New York would change my life forever for the better. This program, which trains New Yorkers how to become production assistants, highlights the verbiage, "O lingo," as we say, as well as the duties in different departments that makes up the film production, from pre-pro to post-production. Please check it out and support if you can. It has been the pivot in which my life was turned around on. You know, bridging the gap of Made in New York and becoming a part of the film industry in New York City has altered my life, the way I live, the way I think, and the way I see the world, as well as how I raise my family. It has given me a great discipline and we know discipline equals freedom. Just to let you know, I felt it urgent to come and testify and by creating more interactive film and entertainment programs that the community has partaken so they can see and understand what happens in production. There's nothing better than being able to experience and relate to something that's embedded in everyone's life. Let's encourage more film festivals and partner with local high schools, colleges, and universities to develop film-related curriculum. Expanding the film industry in New York City requires an approach that involves government incentives, industry partnerships, and community involvement. And lastly, I just want to thank the chairs of the committee, all of the councilmembers, the mayor's office, Made in New York, the program which I graduated from, the local 817 Teamsters Executive Board, and all of you who showed up here today. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you so much. The next witness will be John Williams. You may begin your testimony when ready.
And to save time, Mr. Reynoso and I will do our testimony together. Thank you, Chairs Ose, Farias, and Gutierrez, for the opportunity to testify about how Realworks is partnering with industry to train New Yorkers from all communities in careers in film and television. My name is John Williams. I am the co-founder and CEO of Realworks, a Brooklyn-based nonprofit that has mentored and trained thousands of New Yorkers through free filmmaking and workforce development programs for over 20 years.
Hello, I'm Charles Reynoso. I'm the Director of Education at Realworks. I want to thank you all for the opportunity and I want to thank Chair Farias and Ose for awarding Realworks Casa Grants this year so that we can bring our award-winning filmmaking programs to your districts, one of which is in the Bronx, Boogie Down. Through these programs, Realworks teaches young New Yorkers to tell their stories through filmmaking. And for some, it sparks a passion and leads to careers in film and television. In 2019, Realworks partnered with the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, CUNY, and leading media companies to launch Media Makers, a career development program that has engaged, trained, and mentored nearly 500 New Yorkers for careers in film and television. Nearly 400 high school and CUNY students have received multiple-paid media internships at companies such as NBC Universal, Warner Brothers Discovery, and Paramount. 87% of our alumni have found full-time jobs in media companies.
Also in 2019, Realworks partnered with Netflix and IATSE Local 52 to create the Studio Mechanics Boot Camp, an 80-hour, hands-on, union-led training designed to prepare trainees to work on lighting crews. Eight young men and women graduated from that first training, permitted to work on sets like The Golden Age and Law and Order SVU. Since then, we have trained over 60 New Yorkers for union careers. Remarkably, 97% of our trainees have found steady work in their crafts, earning union wages and benefits. Over the next two years, Realworks will partner with seven union locals to train nearly 200 New Yorkers in 14 crafts, including grip, electric, set dressing, hair, makeup, scenic, camera, casting, and accounting. Expansion in the New York film industry requires a trained workforce. Realworks is building a bridge between New York communities, all communities, and the film industry that can help diversify and strengthen that workforce.
So the city can support the expansion of the film industry in several ways, including funding programs like Media Makers to extend career exploration and career training opportunities for all communities, designating film as a priority industry in the city's workforce development programs, including summer youth employment and work, learn, and grow, and supporting Realworks education and job training programs with initiative funding to cover intern wages and support services. We'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much. That concludes this panel and we'll now move to the next panel. As a reminder, we also have written testimony. One, I'm so sorry, one moment, we do have one question.
I'm sorry.
We're sorry.
Psych, sit back down. So I'll work my way backwards. Love Realworks, thank you for that shout-out. I really appreciate the work that you're doing in my district. For you two folks, how have you seen the workforce connections happening by the city and maybe local productions to the students that you are working with in schools?
Well, Realworks has a, we train middle schoolers, elementary schoolers, high schoolers through free after-school filmmaking programs. That's what we've been doing for 20 years. We began to support workforce programs as we saw our young people grow up and need access to the industry. We saw very talented young people, very inspired young people lose their way after high school. So about 10 years ago, we really began to build and scaffold workforce programs. First, we did internships, partnering with our foundation partners and industry partners to create paid internships. The mayor's office came through to create Media Makers, connecting us to CUNY, which means 200 New Yorkers and high schoolers and college students getting their first jobs and multiple jobs over time. That's why that program is so successful in graduating people to the industry. The second group is the work we've done with the unions and with the employers, develop sort of bespoke programs to train New Yorkers. And these are mostly older people, young adults or older adults, like a salon worker who never worked in the TV industry, trained by Local 798, becoming, going on Broadway to swing and start learning hairstyling, who's now in the film union. So there's only, there are more than one pathway into this industry. People always talk about interns and production assistants. The truth is that with partnership with the unions, who are coming forward as truly enthusiastic, inspiring partners, we can upskill New Yorkers with skills like carpentry, like hair, like makeup, like accounting into this industry that many of them never imagined working in, but have the skills to participate in and earn these high wages.
Great, thank you. And then just, I just have a question for each of our panelists, sorry. Charles, I'm really excited to see you here. I appreciate that you went through an apprenticeship slash apprenticeship model. Do you think the expansion of these models in our city is critical to making sure that we have the workforce and the pipeline needed?
Yes, I do. I think it's very critical, you know, being a representative from the Made in New York program, which also has a post-production program. I think more funding allows for, you know, people like myself who never thought about entering the industry, never knew what it was. They gave me a full background, onset etiquette, the area of it, what it takes to make it. And actually, internship before you graduate, they take you to local prop houses, they take you to rental houses. You actually get to work before you graduate. That's one of the requirements. And just making you feel confident in jumping into a new industry and actually being able to change your life and give you more than just a financial stability, just discipline, just a family, just one that you never knew. And it really pushes you forward. And my friends from my neighborhood see, I even helped a couple get into the program and it's changed the lives of a lot of people.
That's great. And I'll forgive you for only complimenting Councilmember Ose earlier.
I apologize. Appreciate all of it.
Come correct next time.
I definitely will.
We're all here. And just my last question for MPA. Just want to touch base on what you think the council could do to advocate for the continuation and the enhancement of the state tax credit programs?
Yeah, I mean, I think they continue to be supportive and be thoughtful. And I think honestly, working with MOM to make sure they have the resources they need, whether it's staffing or technology, to ensure that we can correct some of these, you know, frustrations that the industry has with different neighborhoods. So I do think providing them with resources is a way to help them acclimate to the growing, hopefully growing, you know, growing industry here.
Great. And then just two last things. Can you touch on how many jobs the industry contributed to New York City pre-COVID? And then potentially during COVID? And do you happen to have a breakdown of jobs, of those jobs in 2021 per borough?
Pre-COVID, our numbers were 185,000 jobs. Post-COVID, it's 108. As Commissioner Del Castillo said, you know, there's been a little bit of a dip. By boroughs, I do have that information. It's 5,944 jobs in the Bronx, 30,143 jobs in Brooklyn, 32,138 jobs in Manhattan, 15,759 jobs in Queens, and 1,802 jobs in Staten Island.
Great. And I might steal you on the side to look through those again.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for entertaining my questions, folks.
Okay, and that concludes this panel. Thank you very much. Apologies again. The next panel will be Doug Steiner, Lorcan Ottway, Tyrell Hunt, and Huda Lazarak. Okay, one moment. Okay, and we'll now begin with Mr. Doug Steiner. You may begin your testimony when ready. As a reminder, there is a two-minute clock, but the committees will review written testimony. So whatever you don't include today is also included in the record as testimony. Thank you very much and you may begin when ready. Just make sure you see the red light. Just push the button.
Okay, how's that? I just want to say a few things about the industry that I think will clear up some misconceptions. This is manufacturing. This is a manufacturing industry. It makes a product and it is manufacturing as a business that wants to be in New York and that can thrive in New York, unlike most manufacturing, where New York cannot be competitive. There are three throttles on the business here. It is driven by the tax credit at the state level. So our local representatives at the city level have to really be fully in support of the credit renewal proposed by the governor. The workforce, when the business was running at full tilt about two years ago, three years ago, the unions were at full employment. So workforce availability, crew availability is critical. And having the business here is driving up employment opportunities for everyone. Third is making the business easy to work in New York, location shooting permits and the like. Keep in mind, on a location shooting permit, if a character lives at a certain house on a certain block and that's a 12-episode series, there are going to be a lot of days shooting on that block for that house. And also keep in mind that series are written as they go. They're not written in advance and then they know what they're going to do for the next six months or nine months. They're writing episode eight while they're shooting episode three. So the predictability of normal industries doesn't apply here. And even shooting schedules are determined the night before or two nights before and not much before that. And are also weather-dependent and depend on a whole host of variables. The soundstages that you talk about, we don't create any content here. Kaufman doesn't create content, Steiner Studios doesn't create content, Silver Cup doesn't create content. In LA, there are studio executives, they budget three cities in the world, they decide where it's going to go, and they're going to go where it's cheapest. It's show business, it's not show art. New York has to be competitive to compete. All right. I have a lot more I could say, but thank you. Just don't take the industry for granted because it is nomadic and it will move wherever it's cheapest. And we are down from 85 series to 25 series because of the uncertainty with the credit. So jobs, jobs, jobs.
And please, please also submit written testimony, which will supplement the oral testimony as well.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you so much. The next witness will be Lorcan Ottway and you may begin when ready.
Thank you. As to diversity, I would like to start by saying Muco Taka Geniev and Ando Berlade Romania. I'm the, as far as I know, only theater owner in New York who is Romani commonly called gypsy. And come this April, there will be none of us. I built Theater 80 with my father in 1964. Your good man Charlie Brand to our present role as the home of the Negro Ensemble Company. We've maintained a place in New York's theater history. We've launched the careers of actors such as Bob Balaban, Gary Bergoff, and one of our ushers, Billy Crystal. Feature films such as Late Night with Emma Thompson and the TV mini-series such as The Deuce and numerous other TV shows such as The Travel Channel and History Channel shows have been filmed in our venue. Every year, we've provided employment for actors, technicians, and other theater professionals, as well as contributed to the support of restaurants, hotels, hardware stores, and all the businesses that rely on tourism and the theater's place in that industry. New York State Controller Thomas Donapoli's report this year describes the total loss of 55% of the employment in theater in New York in the last year. The loss of every theater causes losses to the city and state. Countless economic opportunities are lost. Early in 2019, the deaths of two family members of this family business necessitated a mortgage. Three months later, state action shut down our theater, our historic tavern, and our world-famous museum. The state provided us no protections from the effect of that shutdown and no protection against a predator company purchasing our debt and causing the debt to double to over $13 million from a $6 million loan. The bankruptcy court has refused to consider the role of state action and the impending loss of our theater. The jobs of, well, long story short, we are starting a not-for-profit and without aggressive help from the city, who did not suspend property taxes. So every dime we got from the federal government during the shutdown went to pay property taxes. And the loss of every theater is a loss to the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next witness will be Tyrell Hunt.
First, I'd like to thank Chair Ose, Chair Farias, and Chair Gutierrez and members of the city council for the opportunity to testify. My name is Tyrell Hunt. I work as a Director of Marketing at Jamaica Center for Arts and Learning, also known as JCal in Queens, New York. I'm also a filmmaker, working on my second feature film, The Sound of the South Side. Through both my job at JCal and my efforts as a filmmaker, I have witnessed the impact that the medium of film can have on a community. I ask that the city make a concerted effort towards allocating funds to BIPOC filmmakers and organizations that serve our communities. I believe that this investment will result in a more creative and vibrant New York. At JCal, I helped to produce the annual 10-Minute Film Festival, where emerging BIPOC directors are showcased and receive cash prizes. We run this event on a shoestring budget. Still, our festival has become a place for underrepresented filmmakers to showcase their stories and find community. JCal and many other organizations are doing the work and we could expand our reach and impact with the city's help. While there are many programs like Made in NY, which provide incentives for big-budget movies to film in NYC, the city is in need of more incentives for micro-budget filmmakers and more funding for the festivals which showcase their work. I am one of these filmmakers. Film has taught me to be resourceful and collaborative. With my most recent film, I raised over $50,000 and happily paid it right back to the many artists and small businesses that were a part of the film. The community of Jamaica, Queens benefited directly from my film's production. My spend on everything from the costumes to the catering and locations took place within the neighborhood. I also forged relationships with various local artists and businesses. When I premiered the film this spring in Queens, attendees will be able to see themselves and their community represented well. Despite my film's economic impact, I do not qualify for opportunities like the Made in NY marketing credit or the New York State Film Tax Credit Program. These restraints discourage many local NYC artists from creating or prompt them to make their films elsewhere. My film's story will focus on the resiliency of art in NYC. There are many other artists with stories to tell. on the resiliency of art in NYC. There are many other artists with stories to tell. I welcome a conversation to discuss ways that the City Council could allocate more funding and resources to BIPOC filmmakers, and I'm looking forward to connecting on the issue.
Why don't you qualify for the Made in New York tax credit?
To my knowledge, there is a million-dollar, your budget has to be at least $1 million to qualify for the tax credit, and at least $400,000 to qualify for the marketing credit.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the last witness on this panel, Huda Lazarak. Again, apologies for any mispronunciation.
That was perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Huda Lazarak, and I am here on behalf of the International Studio and Curatorial Program, ISCP, where I am Director of Development and Communications. We are the fourth-largest visual arts residency program in the world, embedded in North Brooklyn in District 34. City Council Gutierrez, thank you for your continuous support. We are a small-sized CDF organization located in a three-story former printing factory with 35 sunlit studios and two exhibition galleries. Each year, over 100 artists come for funded residencies, and among them, at least 25% are artist filmmakers or artists working with the mediums of film or video. We provide them with the time, space, and professional support to develop their craft and create new film works. We also present public programming focused on film, including indoor and outdoor screenings, and talks by artist filmmakers. In 2022, we embarked on a five-year capital campaign to improve our facilities. Among the priorities of the campaign is the creation of a digital editing suite to support the needs of artist filmmakers. We seek to install state-of-the-art production and post-production hardware and software available to our residents 24/7 for free. We want to offer them the means to succeed in their filmmaking careers and know that a digital editing suite will significantly increase this possibility. The need for a suite was identified based on the direct feedback from our residents, particularly with the vocal advice of Muliya Mungu Muhande Gift. Gift is a young Brooklyn-based Sundance acclaimed filmmaker from Congo, whose work explores the global history of Black diaspora and anti-colonial change. During her six-month residency at ISCP, she directed the film Kobe Kisa, which was then presented in a solo show in our gallery. The film shows Gift receiving acupuncture and massage treatment at the Life Wellness Center in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn. Through it, she aims to normalize and celebrate images of Black trust, tenderness, and healing. Thanks to ISCP's exhibition, Kobe Kisa was then picked up by Aubin Pictures, a production company and media distributor focused on films that catalyze social change. So yeah, the bottom line is that we're having a creative capital campaign, and we're seeking support to be able to further support more BIPOC artists like Muliya Mungu Muhande Gift, who's been very successful so far. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. This concludes this panel, and we'll now move to the next panel. Again, the committee will be reviewing written testimony. That can be submitted to testimony@council.nyc.gov up to 72 hours after the hearing. We'll now move to the next in-person panel, which is Donald P. Cato, Ryan Ferguson, and Peter Capsilis. If there is anyone else in the room who would like to testify, and you have not submitted a witness slip, please do so at this time. If you can, please let us know that you're here. We'll be moving to a Zoom panel after this. Okay. So again, we have a two-minute clock, which is on the wall, and we will review written testimony. So we're following the clock, but anything that you don't include will be part of the record. So we'll start with Donald P. Cato, and you may begin your testimony when ready.
Thank you to the council for having me here today, representing. I'm Donald Preston Cato. I'm the co-founder of the Queens World Film Festival. I'm also the artistic director. My wife is the executive director and co-founder. We're a 503, 503. We did read the 2021 Impact Study of the New York City Film Industry Focus largely on production, and that's fair. That's a big chunk of the revenue. But it's time to look at what can be done to expand the support for film festivals, especially the smaller festivals around all boroughs. So in our particular festival, this year, we welcomed over 4,000 people to the borough to watch 157 films from 27 nations, and most of the audience came from outside the borough. We've built up a big reputation. We're one of the top film festivals in the world out of over 10,000 festivals. We're ranked in the top 20 for developing new filmmakers. We also employ a great number of young talent, which is what we pride ourselves in, and we work with young talent in developing them with educational programs that have served over 1,218 students, producing over 91 short films of every type that you can possibly imagine, and some you can't. We've provided positions for 262 interns from Real Works, Media Makers, Ladders for Leaders, and other professional training to prepare them for entrance into the industry, not just in making the film, but in what it takes to put on a festival or make a film, which is in back office. And so we've seen, however, we have no home, like a lot of independent film festivals. We've done this for 13 years out of our living room, and like other smaller festivals, we would like to find space, which is rare. Just to let you know, a couple of our ongoing festivals, exhibits, or things that we're doing, we have a listening tour, which was going around to Queens and the Bronx, looking for unheard voices, and the interns have to shoot and then put them up, and that's a project with the Queens Memory Project in the library. And on the 23rd of April, we're doing Passion and Action, which is young filmmakers, mostly female, are to come and have a round robin and meet professional, other professional women from other areas, not just filmmaking, but from Queens, professional roller derby, hockey, and other sports, so that they can meet and meet their dreams. And lastly, I wanted to say that go to our website, and you'll see one of the most amazing testimonies from a young person who said part of it was, "You can't have hope without resilience," and that's what the independent film festivals like ours does. We are resilient.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The next person will be Ryan Ferguson. You may begin when ready.
I have a question. Sorry. You can go.
Good morning, or afternoon. My name's Ryan Ferguson. I am a location manager in New York. I am a member of the Directors Guild of America. I am also on the Mayor's Industry Council. I also volunteer my time at Brooklyn College to talk to film students every semester. I've lived in New York City my entire life, and I have made movies in this city for the last 20 years or more. I have a written statement. I hope you all get to read the whole thing. I'm just going to skip to the important thing about the outreach. This is from all the other various unions in the film community who came together to talk about what we do. Local 52 Motion Studio Mechanics works with the Bronx Community College to develop talent pipelines, where students can learn the required skills for entry-level into the film training, into the film and television industry. Scenic Artist Local 829 has a program for emerging artists, New York-based scenic artists for apprenticeship program. Has the most diverse group in New York Workers Program. The International Cinematographers Guild, I see Local 600, in addition to participating in the New York Outreach Events and inviting students to its screenings, has partnered with Warner Brothers and Sony to place interns on productions. Local 600 also provides financing to support BWI administrators of the Made in New York Production Assistance Training Program. The Motion Picture Editors' Guild, our Local 700, has invited Bronx Community College students to editors' guild seminars, screenings, networking events for the past five years, formalizing their relationship in 2022 by providing funding and member instruction. The Writers Guild of America East has run two full cycles of the Made in New York Writers Room Fellowship, in which an intensive mentoring program for diverse writers funded by the city through Moam and SBS. I go on to a lot of other things. I hope you guys read the statement. But what I would like to say is, I'm a working location manager in New York and would love to answer your questions about what happens on the streets and the whole permitting process, because I'm the guy that does that.
All right. We'll go to the next panelists and then have questions. The next panelist is Peter Capsilis. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Hi, how are you? I appreciate that you're mostly not adversarial and supporting our industry. Everyone that came here to say something seems to have our back. So I'm one of the little guys that grew into big studios. I went to Edward R. Murrow High School through a vocational program that had television, cameras, editing, and everything you could learn. And the person that left that department went to Pratt, got, moved the whole students there. So I want to first push, you have to nourish young people to get into our business. They don't know that the cameras they're holding, their iPhones they're holding, they're becoming little filmmakers. That has to be nourished at a school, high school level. When we're talking about $120,000 jobs, we're not talking about college grads all the time. We're talking about probably 50% to 60% people that didn't go to college. I went to college because I was fortunate that we got pulled into a program to do that sort of thing. So from college, I got a $140 job a week, working at a camera rental house. From this camera rental house, we learned how to develop equipment. This was all in New York, all in Brooklyn and the Queens area. We learned how to develop equipment. That equipment that we developed was used on Lord of the Rings. It was something called the Revolution Lens System. If you look it up, it's still popular to today. That got us close to clientele that used, you know, high-end equipment. Were shooting at studios when the business transitioned from film to digital. And about 12 years ago, 13 years ago, we decided to ask our clientele if they would shoot at a studio that we'd open. We opened a small advertising studio on Elizabeth Street, Manhattan. Within two years, we added 145,000 square feet of studios on the Williamsburg waterfront. By 2011, we added another 125,000 square feet. We just expanded into Long Island City. We added 67,000 square feet. We have plans to develop 300,000 square feet in the immediate area. Anyone who says that the industry doesn't support local businesses, when you eat, are you going to order from the Bronx if you're eating in Brooklyn? You're going to order locally. If the trucks aren't on the job, you know, usually they're on the job when the productions are shooting. You know, the rest of the time, it's all local. So, you know, let's keep this going. We want the tax credit to continue. It's sad that I'm hearing, hearing that, you know, an 80-fold of productions has turned into 25 because of an expiring credit. This we saw before. This we're seeing with Development 421A, where developers now are stalling projects. This can't happen. We have to, the industry has to know in advance that we can produce something with some planning ahead. They're not going to plan a job when they think that production credit's going to go away. So we, I'm thankful. I'm sorry it took a little long. I was last. But I've succeeded in this business, and, you know, it's obvious what it does to the neighborhood around you. We're in an IBZ in Long Island City, and we do well. Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you saying that. I do understand, I think many of us understand that when we, when folks are planning for a series, it's not, we're not hoping the series doesn't get picked up after a series, you know, after one timeframe. We want to, we want to plan for three, five years of a series that we're putting forward, or at least the production studio is investing in. So I totally understand that. And in terms of the locality, I think more times than not, what we need to focus on is, how do we actually make that more transparent versus us having to utilize a 3-1-1 complaint system, or a, you know, by-case, by-case scenario where people are calling and complaining? How do we make it more fluid and more transparent, that the locality is definitely benefiting from productions, and what that actually is translating to? So I appreciate you saying that. And, yes, and I just have a question for Mr. Cato. I just wanted to ask around what you meant by you'd like to have a home, and ideally, what does that mean, I guess, economically for a space for film festivals, whether that's in the city or in the borough that they're predominantly working in? Like, what does that actually mean? And I guess, why, why is there an inability to have a designated space?
Thank you for the question. Well, after 12 years of operating out of our living room, and really surviving on what we, money from two particular city council members who have termed out, and then in that change, that caused a great shortfall in terms of what our, part of our budget was. But nonetheless, we've been trying to find a space that would be good for our home. So we had an office and perhaps a teaching area, because the one thing we do is we try to do things year-round, so we're not just a one-time event. Something is going on with our festival or festival sponsors throughout the year, using interns, young people of all types, inclusion classes. We're working with a neurologically challenged group at Common Point, and it would be great if we had places where we could have classrooms ourselves in a, in a space that was close to transportation. And it's just very difficult to look for it, especially when we're such a small 501(c)(3). And that's what I mean by finding a home. We know that there's other companies in the borough, Queens, dance companies and others that have got spaces, and we are pursuing with the time that we have to see what is available. Would be a big help. We'd also like to have a space where we can screen works in progress by filmmakers, so we can have group critiques and conversations. And that's just not possible with the screening facilities that are available. It's a lot of money to go to anything that has projection that's of quality. I mean, we're very fortunate. Kaufman Astoria Studios does let us go into their small screening room, 75 seats, and we'll take it when we can, when we can get it. But it would be nice to have a place where, that we could call, "This is where Queens World Film Festival resides."
Got it. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you so much. That concludes this panel. So at this point, we will now move to remote Zoom testimony. Again, we will review all written testimony later. So I will read the names of the next panelists. It will be Abdullah Allen, Austin Smith, David Grindel, and Tom Harris. This next panel will be our last panel, and we will check for anyone we inadvertently missed after the panel. Just wait one moment, and then we will move to the next witness. Okay, so again, our next witness will be Abdullah Allen. Again, we have a two-minute clock, so when the sergeant calls the clock, you begin testimony, and anything not within that two minutes, it's still part of the record if it's in written testimony. So Ms. Allen, if you are ready to begin, you may start when the sergeant calls the clock.
Starting time.
My name is Abdullah Allen, and I'm here before you to tell you about myself and my experience working in the film industry and, excuse me, in film industry as a truck driver for theatrical, pardon me, theatrical teams at Local 817. I'm here today just to tell you about the person who I was then to the person I am today. I was born in the Bronx, raised by a mother who was a single parent of four children. My mother was an EKG technician for 30 years, worked hard to provide us with important things in life that we needed. A mother who taught us principles and values. However, growing up in the Bronx was not easy, as I allowed myself to become a victim of my vomit, of my vomit at an early age.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. We can see you. Oh, now, now we can hear you again. Thank you, Ms. Allen. We, sorry, we're not, we can see you speaking, but we can't hear you again. Just the last sentence.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
I'm sorry. In April of 1999, I was arrested and charged with criminal possession of a firearm and drug possession, which led to my conviction of 210 months in federal custody and three years consecutive in the state. Although it's not easy to tell someone that I was incarcerated for many reasons, it doesn't define the person that I am today. While I was incarcerated, I had begun setting goals for my future, and one of those goals was to become a truck driver. On November 16, 2016, I was released from prison after serving 17 and a half years in prison. I worked multiple jobs to stay afloat, with the focus of achieving my goals as a truck driver. I've been working in the trucking industry for approximately four years. I worked multiple companies. I worked for multiple companies, looking for that one that suited me the best. Not every, not every company is for everyone, and a driver must be passionate, passionate about working for that company. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I worked with some companies where I couldn't find that passion and love.
Time has expired.
My fiance, oh, sorry. Hello?
The chair said you can go. You can finish if you can wrap up, please.
All right. The film industry has changed my, my ways. I was introduced to the film industry by John McDermott. He was, he was running a program, a trucking program for custodian. He was, he was running a program, a trucking program for custodian of workers' education, CWE. He referred me to John, Brian Solomon, Solomon. Brian Solomon, he gave me the rundown of the history of the trucking company. The film industry has changed my ways and, and ways that I cannot have imagined. It exceeded expectations and a better way for me and my family. And with that, I would like to say thank you and thank you for having me.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And again, if there's anything that you did not include in your oral testimony, the committees will review written testimony. Thank you. The next witness will be Austin Smith. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock.
Starting time.
Thank you. Thank you to Chair Ose, Chair Farias, Chair Guideras and other members of the committees for hosting today's hearing. My name is Austin Smith and I represent the Museum of the Moving Image in Astoria. Today, I wanted to address the film and education programs that the museum provides to the diverse communities in New York City and in Queens. When the museum first opened to the public in 1988, we set out to build the bridge between movie viewers and movie makers, both in front of and behind the camera. Founded in part by the city, the film labor unions and guilds, and the New York-based film industry professionals. Our museum is not just a dedication to the actors and directors who rise to fame thanks to film, but to the camera operators, grips, prop masters, special effect and sound artists from working families who come together to create movie magic. The museum not only serves as a hub for creators from all over the world to introduce themselves to New York City, but also as a forum for New York City creators to introduce themselves to the world. Through the core exhibition Behind the Screen, as well as our ongoing special programming, such as the Queens World Film Festival, which we host in partnership with Mr. Cato, MoM's First Look Festival and Marvel's of Media, which is a festival and exhibition dedicated to the works of media makers on the autism spectrum. We give filmmakers the platform and big silver screen to highlight their incredible work. The museum's educational program opens a world of possibilities to students and adults. Our, our work highlights job opportunities in the film industries and other creative industries that might not otherwise have appeared as accessible. The museum proudly welcomes over 70,000 students per year through its door, through its doors, and introduce a wide-ranging world of filmmaking to the next generation of New York film creatives. We're incredibly thankful for the support that city council has provided to us in forms of CASA, SU CASA, and Art as a Catalyst for Change grants. Through these programs, we are able to introduce students across Queens to the fine process of media making and give them the confidence to pursue their passions. Our teen council program invites local teens from under-resourced communities with the opportunity to gain experience working in a local cultural institution.
Time has expired.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
You can, you can close if you have one more sentence or so.
I know.
Okay, I appreciate the CWE shout-out, love me some CWE and do not come back here with that chucky in the background. Thank you so much.
The next witness is David Grindel. You may begin your testimony when ready.
Good afternoon, my name is David Grindel and I'm the Executive Director of the Society of Motion Picture and Television Engineers, or CMTI for short. I'd like to thank all three committees and their chairs for the opportunity to appear before you today to discuss the impact of an expansion of the film industry in New York City. CMTI has been part of the entertainment industry for over a century. As a society of engineers, our members have been directly responsible for some of the most innovative technological advancements in film and television. We continue to make strides in this regard, producing new technologies and standards that shape how media is created and experienced. Engineering and technology is a vital part of the film and television industries. Were the New York City film industry to continue to expand, the city would quickly become not just an artistic capital, but a technological one as well. The financial impact of such expansion would be felt in every aspect of media production, creating jobs in traditional fields as well as emerging industries. In addition to live shots on the streets of New York, several virtual production studios have already found their way here. The blend of computer science, gaming technology and production means things filmed on these stages in New York City can take place anywhere in the world or your imagination. Additional support means New York City could become a leader in this frontier. An expansion of the film industry will create well-paying jobs for New Yorkers. Institutions such as Borough of Manhattan Community College and City Tech are already developing programs to train their students for these emerging industries. That means a more diverse workforce is ready to meet the growth and expansion of city support will bring. Though often overlooked, the technical side of the industry generates more employment than people typically appreciate. CMTI has always forged a path for film engineers and an, and an expanded film industry in New York City will result in innovation and employment.
Time has expired.
Well into this century and the next. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We'll now move to the final witness. This is the final person on this panel, as well as the final witness for this hearing and public testimony. We will check for anyone that we inadvertently missed and who registered after this witness. So Tom Harris, you may begin your testimony when ready.
Thank you very much, good afternoon, Chairpersons Ose, Farias, Gutierrez and members of the Committees of Cultural Affairs, Economic Development and Technology. My name is Tom Harris and the President of the Times Square Alliance, the Business Improvement District that's tasked with keeping Times Square clean, safe and desirable for all. The Alliance wholeheartedly supports the film industry's expansion in New York City and the important cultural, cultural and nightlife efforts championed by Commissioner Andy Del Castillo. Commissioner Del Castillo, Kwame, the entire MoM team and all of the unions have been phenomenal partners. New York City's film industry provides tremendous economic benefit to our neighborhood, both directly and indirectly. First, Times Square is home to hundreds of film shoots and tens of movie premieres annually, providing local businesses with critical revenue, especially in post-pandemic tourism economy. As the theater hub of New York City, the film industry taps into the local Broadway workforce, supporting actors, producers, stagehands and more. Further, these shoots and premieres translate to direct spending in our district. Second, the film industry provides an important source of advertising for the neighborhood and for the city. Based on research conducted by the Times Square Advertising Coalition and the Alliance, 90% of our visitors have seen Times Square in the media in the last six months, mostly, most commonly through TV and movies. Combined these direct and indirect benefits help to financially bolster our tourism-oriented neighborhood and promote Times Square as New York's premier cultural destination. Times Square continues to be successful in a post-pandemic world because of its brand as the cultural crossroads of the world. The film industry helps to support this communal experience, driving our local economy while ensuring the neighborhood remains in the hearts and minds of tourists and New Yorkers alike. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. At this point, we'll check for anyone we inadvertently missed. We might be having technical difficulties with one witness, if you can please just bear with us. We're also checking for Shadie Lithcott, Cheryl Warfield, Nicholas Sherman. Just bear with us for one moment. And again, if there's anyone in the room who would like to testify, please let us know at this point. We also accept written testimony up to 72 hours after the hearing. It's also possible to amend testimony. It should be sent to testimony@council.myc.gov. We're just checking for Carolyn Gershenson. One moment, please. We're just working on a Zoom issue with somebody, trying to log on, it'll just be one moment.
Put some elevator music while we wait. Just some elevator music while we wait. Don't, don't feel obligated to stay here, folks. I know I look good in the front of the dais, but it's tough. Really, the camera had to come on me as I'm joking around.
We're still working on a technical issue. All right, we're going to wait one more minute, we're gonna, we'll be concluding the hearing in just a moment. We're just going to wait one minute if there's anyone else that would like to join. Okay, when we'll move to our final witness at this point, Carolyn Gershenson. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock.
You may begin.
Hi.
Okay, when we'll move to our final witness at this point, Carolyn Gershenson. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant calls the clock.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being so patient.
You may begin.
Can you?
When we'll move to our final witness at this point. You have the hearing on another form of technology, either on your computer open, you'll have to close that because you're on a delay.
Thank you for being so patient.
You may begin.
Can you?
When we'll move to our final witness at this point. Of technology, either on your computer open, you'll have to.
Okay, it stopped, we're hearing, we were hearing a loop of the audio. If you want to begin again, we'll start the clock.
Audio, if you want to begin again, we'll start the clock.
How's this sound?
We can, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you for your patience. And thank you to the council for hearing this.
Audio, if you want to begin again.
Ma'am, if you're, if you're streaming the, the hearing on another device, you're going to have to close that device out so that when you talk, it doesn't double back.
The hearing on another device, you're going to have to close that device out so that when you talk. Okay, how's this?
We can hear you.
Okay, I think I've got it straight. Thank you for your patience and thank you to the council for hearing this important information on film and television in New York City. I'm Carolyn Gershenson. I am probably part of the smallest division of film in New York City. I am Local 52, IATC Local 52, part of the medical division. So we are medics, so we take care of illness or injury on set as they occur, if they occur. And we're a group of approximately 110 with about 150 on permit waiting for their cards. I've been a nurse since 1983. I'm a native New Yorker, native of Brooklyn, and I have been with Local 52 since 1996. I've actually created the medic department at that time. I'm very happy to be here, thank you to MoMA for inviting me here to speak. My concern is diversity, diversity within, certainly with my small group, diversity is an issue. And sure, the other departments as well, which, which I can see apparent on set. Things have gotten better certainly since 96, but that, you know, has been my concern. And if you have any questions for me, that would be great, but that's kind of, you know, my statement that film is very important to New York City, but also the diversity that it should bring to the work environment is important as well.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
All right, thank you so much, that concludes this panel. And again, we will be reviewing all written testimony. So if there are additional points you would like to submit in written testimony, that can be submitted up to 72 hours after the hearing. At this point, we have checked for witnesses that were registered or present. So this concludes the public testimony portion of the hearing. Chair Farias?
I just want to say thank you for everyone who came to publicly testify and thank you for MoM for coming here to address all of our questions. We look forward to reading through additional testimony and following up on items that are outstanding. And thank you all again for attending with that. This hearing is adjourned.
With that, this hearing is adjourned.